Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Good evening. And welcome. This is absolutely terrific. Thank you, thank you for noticing that we have a board of commissioners here. Sometimes it gets very quiet. So, thank you for being involved in your government. Cheers to you. It is a delight to see all the youth that is here tonight, including us. This is June 12th, 2017, Monday, the Commissioners Meeting, Haverford Township. And we will begin with taking role, please. Mr. Secretary?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Here.
Mr. McCluskey.
Here.
Mr. Siegel.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Mr. McGarrett.
Here.
Mr. Wexler.
Here.
Mr. Aliva.
Here.
And Mr. Connell.
Here. Leading us in prayer tonight will be Jim Taylor from the Manoa Community Church. Please rise. Would you please, uh... We are? Would you please join me in prayer? Lord, we give praise and celebration for the opportunity to gather, the opportunity to be in a free country where we can offer different ideas and have elected officials who sacrifice a lot of time and energy to listen to the concerns. We give praise that we have that opportunity to be gathered here. Give praise for the young people who could be involved in whatever capacity. We thank you for the diligence and the efforts for all those who represent this tremendous community, and it's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Chief?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well said. God bless America. Just as a point of note here, Kathy Hayes is sitting in for our solicitor, Jim Burnson. Kathy, thank you very much. Kelly, Kelly, Kelly Hayes. Okay, first on the agenda tonight, we have Commissioner McGarrett and Commissioner Aliva with a proclamation with Mr. Clemons. Gentlemen?
Well, good morning. And I have to behave myself. My wife is here tonight, ladies and gentlemen, so I'll be good. Can't have Wilbur here by himself, Bonnie. Come on, you and Jason, come on up here, too.
Hey, Jimmy.
Yes.
Dave and Rich are here from the park board.
Dave and Rich, Dave McGargoyle, Rich Carata, Ronnie O'Connor, they're here from the park board. Come on up here, please. I can't talk without some company up here.
Sure. Wilbur's been on our park board for 25 years. He has been, um, he's, you know, when, uh, when nobody else shows up, this guy comes and, and, and he goes through, through a lot to get here, but to give back to his community, and we appreciate that, Wilbur. We appreciate everything you do for us. Um, let me read the proclamation. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania takes great pride in recognizing these people who have volunteered their time and talents to our community to make it a better place to live and play. Whereas Wilbur Clemons served on the park board for 25 years and through his participation and thoughtful insights helped guide the department into the premier department that it is today. Whereas Wilbur Clemons also served on the Board of Carrickon Little League for 15 years, helping to continue the tradition of excellence it maintains in offering Little League baseball to thousands of youths over the years. Therefore, be proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners thanks Wilbur Clemons and his family for his many years of outstanding service to his community and wishes him good, good health and happiness for many years to come, proclaimed this 12th day of June 2017. Chris Connell, Commissioner, Larry Gentile, Manager.
I'd like to say, thank everybody. Um, well, I'm not much for speech, but I will say this. Looking back 25 years ago, what this township had for recreation and what it's become today, mainly because of pandemic and a group of commissioners that finally all nine cared about recreation. You're very lucky to have these people representing us. Thank you.
Just want everybody to know that Wilbur Clemons, this didn't just happen yesterday or last week or last year. Wilbur's been using this for many a year. And if you look at the, uh, the report cards of the Park and Recreation Board, you'll find Wilbur Clemons was there 95% of the time, if not 98% of the time. Wilbur's a dedicated public servant here. He served his time with the park board. He certainly helped get recreation in Haverford Township. He certainly did a lot with the Little League. The Little League, when Wilbur was involved, didn't have that backfield, and Wilbur was one of the people mainly responsible for putting the minor league back at Carrickon Little League field. So, Wilbur has paid his dues as far as recreation, and one of the main reasons that we're so far ahead in recreation than any of the other townships around is because of people like And it just feels like a Hav- I was at a Haverford graduation the other night, and here's Banana Bobby Liberato here for Wilbur Clemons, and Ronnie O'Connor's here, and oh, you name it, they're here tonight. So, it's great that people came back to recognize Wilbur because he certainly deserves the recognition that he's getting tonight. And thank you all, thank God, for sending all you people here tonight for Wilbur Clemons. Something you wanted to put up with a lot of their stuff around here isn't McGarrett, Bonnie Clemons. I mean, Bonnie has been the saint in that family, let me just say. I got that to the picture, too.
Thank you.
He doesn't need to stand.
He's going.
Okay, Bonnie's.
McGarrett.
I told her, use the biggest polluter. See, look at the biggest polluter right here. See? No, I think it's that way.
Are you gonna keep this meeting going or what?
Okay. All right, thank you very much for that proclamation. Next on the agenda, we have the Police Department Crime Update. Chief Viola, would you please give us that crime update?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Police report for, crime report for May 2017. The Police Department issued 414 parking tickets, 407 traffic citations, 218 written warnings. We had a sex offense, unfounded rape on Haverford College campus, robbery on May 2nd at the Kohl Store, retail theft turned into a robbery. The suspect displayed a stun gun, identified as investigation is going on pending charges. A strong arm robbery at the Quarry Center was unfounded. And a burglary, the 200 block of East Park Road, 4th Century, artwork, jewelry, and silver were taken. A burglary attempt, 1700 block of Westchester Pike and the 800 block of Aubrey Avenue. And two motor vehicle thefts with keys left in the vehicles, one on Lansdowne Road and one on Belmont Avenue. We had 14 vehicles enter this in, in May, all unlocked cars. They ranged from Landilla Road, Y M Z, Kettleworth, all over the township. So, once again, we have a packed house here tonight, so remember, lock your cars, take your keys in the house. I report this every month, so, and it's not going away. A K-9 usage, we had 12 K-9 usages last month. We had two arrests for Act 64, which is drug violations, DUI arrests. We had a bribery with a residence check, suspicious incident track. We helped media with that CVS robbery, Darby Borough for robbery track, Radnor for a vehicle track, Radnor P D. We helped PSP in Ridley Creek Park for a suicidal subject. We helped Radnor for the arrest up at the restaurant up there, and we helped the DEA in Upper Chichester. My report.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely. Commissioner?
Two, two questions, Chief. First off, any update on the radar legislation in Harrisburg, use of radar by local police?
Nothing at all, nothing.
So, it's just still sitting in committee?
Still.
Okay. Second question has to do with, um, what percent of fines, if we issue a parking ticket or a moving violation, what percent of that actually comes into the township versus what goes to the state?
For a moving violation, we get about $15 or $20. The rest goes to the state.
So, $15, $20 out of how much?
Like $185, depending on the citation.
So, we're getting?
Speed limits more. We're getting minimum amount.
Like five to, five to 5% then, basically? And the rest goes to the state?
Yes.
And then what about, what about the parking?
Parking tickets, the person pays the parking ticket, the township gets the full amount. If it goes to citation, the township gets the majority of that back, except the cost of going to court.
Yeah, so why do we get so little of, uh, why does the state get so much and we get so little?
When you look at a citation, there's all different things listed, the, the different funds that's funding through vehicle stops and, and moving violations citations. So, historically?
Just state law?
The townships have never gotten anything back in state law.
Doesn't, doesn't some of it go to our municipal court, though?
Yes, the municipal court, but it doesn't go back to the township for anything. A lot of people think that the tickets, it's a money maker. We don't do it for money making. We do, we do it just because of, uh, to...
Enforcement.
Safety. Some of the money does stay here for our municipal courts, which is for us, for the township.
Yeah, but it sounds like we're gonna get, end up at, you know, 10 or 15, 10%, or 5% doesn't seem, yeah.
I want to go back to your first question, which was the, the use of radar. The local municipalities in the state of Pennsylvania are not allowed to use radar, obviously, and we've been lobbying to try to get that changed because now we can only stop at, what, 11 miles over the speed limit?
Miles over the speed, we, we have to use, basically, stop watches.
Stop with distance measuring, distance measuring devices, which aren't as accurate.
We do measure the distance, that's correct, yes.
Yeah, so...
Right, so it's not as accurate, meaning we have to go by the 11 miles. If we could do, if we could get that, if we could get a radar, then we can get much better, much more accurate.
So, if we, if we do a, a speed check for a 25 mile area zone, we can't stop at like, let's go 36 miles an hour.
And the other problem with the state is they won't allow any 15 mile an hour speed limits. So, this 50 mile an hour speed limit, other than in a school zone when it's flashing, is unenforceable by state law.
That's correct.
So, any, so a lot of people want lower speed limits, but unenforceable by state law, so another restriction by the state, which seems a little cumbersome.
And it's the only state, it's the only state that doesn't allow the local municipalities to use radar. Only state, just us.
Yeah.
We may want to look into that, too.
Contact your state reps and your state senators.
Yes, please. While we have a full house, we're trying to bring it out, so get you guys out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next on the agenda, number four is Commissioner Committee Updates. Are there any updates at this time for any committees?
The only thing I'd like to say is, um...
Commissioner Aliva?
The Economic Development Committee, I just want to, everybody, while I have a full house, um, the, the new fountain that just went in, take a look at that, and on Darby Road, a lot of that, that's happening through our Economic Development Committee through the H P E D, which is a partnership between the township and, and local business owners, and so just wanted to point that out.
Thank you very much. Any other updates? Next on the agenda, number five is a discussion on commercial vehicle parking. Who is leading us on that?
Uh, Mr. Connell.
Your home.
Mr. President, I, I had asked to put that on, um, and I would respectfully ask that it get put a little later in the meeting. I think a lot of people here have something to talk about tonight, and I'm perfectly happy to move mine to 14 or 15 on the agenda and get ahead to the public comment. As much as I'd like to take advantage of this reelection meeting right now, I just say, let's have these people go ahead and say what they're here to say, respond to that, and then I'll get to the, uh, the very dull situation of commercial vehicles, 8,000 pound trucks, and...
Do you wish to do that?
Shrinking area in Haverford where we can actually park a car with writing on it.
Do you want to move that discussion to later tonight, or would you like to move it to...
Oh, no, just later tonight, later in the agenda, yeah. I, I do it right after, um...
You want to make?
Do I, do I need to formally move? I move that we move my, the discussion on commercial vehicles to, uh, the space...
Right after 7:00?
After adjournment. After, that's funny, that's, that's outstanding. Um, just to keep people interested, right before contract award and purchase, so after the DUI grant application resolution number 19, if we could insert the discussion then, that'd be great.
Before number 20?
Consider that, request a motion, yeah.
I thought I was seconding his after adjournment, but I'll second yours.
Thanks, thanks for that.
For Mr. Siegel, all those in favor?
I accept the amendment, yeah.
Aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, Township Ordinance Report, item number six.
Good evening. I review the report for the period commencing May 9th and ending June 12th. I raise certain questions. All those questions were answered by our finance director to my satisfaction, therefore, my opinion, there were no irregularities for the period in question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zottin. Any questions for the order?
No.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, item number seven is Citizens Forum, 20 minutes registered speakers and 20 minutes agenda items. What Citizen Forum is, is the opportunity for the citizens of Haverford Township, the residents, or anyone else, to come before the Board of Commissioners and, for three minutes, give us anything that you would like to talk about. The first seven people signed up tonight, and they can speak on any subject. The next set of people, though, from the audience that will speak, they, they have to speak on something that refers to something on the agenda. We do 20 minutes for each section, so that we can still continue with our meeting through proper time. Anybody that does wish to, to speak and doesn't have that opportunity can certainly do so. As we get towards the end of the meeting, we will have another Citizens Forum, okay? So, that's the whole purpose, like, you're here tonight, and you're going to see why how Citizens Forum helps government work. So, first on Citizens Forum, for registered speakers, we have Jean Lutz. It's, if you could please come up and address the council, name and address.
Yeah, you can go. Start down there.
I'm Jean Lutz, and my address is 169 Clemson Road, Bryn Mawr. That's my assistant Nate, he just is passing out. We have a little handout for everybody, so, that's Nate Drew. Thank you for this opportunity to, to address you. I'm a member of the Havertown Community Action Network, HCAN, and I'm here today to talk about the urgent need for the township to prioritize the task of reducing greenhouse gas emissions. In the wake of President Trump's withdrawal from the Paris Accord, we must do more than we are already doing to protect the climate. In the absence of national leadership, local leadership has suddenly become even more critical to the welfare of our community. We invited our children, who will bear the brunt of unchecked climate change, to rally before your meeting this evening to demonstrate just how strongly we feel about the need for the commission to step up. Before I go on, can I have a show of hands from the audience, how many of you wish to express your support for this call to action? Thank you.
Put your hand down. Yeah.
Good job.
reelection?
So, what are we asking you to do? We're asking for two things tonight. We want you to make a statement, and we want you to take action. First, we request that the commission pass a simple but powerful resolution, one that even children can understand, that states the climate crisis is real, people caused it, and the United States Congress must act now. The idea for this simple statement came from Haverford's own Jan Marie Rushforth, a former commissioner and veteran environmental advocate in our community. Jan couldn't be here tonight because she's lobbying Congress in Washington, DC on behalf of Citizens Climate Lobby, an international volunteer-based organization that promotes market-based solutions. But Jan has agreed to come next month to share more information with you about that effort. Our second request, we request that you take action with expert volunteer help from citizens like Steve Clark, who I think is here tonight? Steve, there's Steve, okay, to determine how far the township has gone toward meeting its own emissions reduction goals. We know that eight years ago, the commission adopted a detailed climate change action plan, which included an emissions inventory and a long list of measures required to meet a specific emissions reduction target by the year 2020. This was a great first step, and it has been followed, we know, by many positive changes, including the replacement of all streetlights with LED models, which is wonderful. But we need to update that plan, which is now eight years old, and assess how well we are meeting our own goals. Please work with us to let more people know about our township's plan and to better understand where we need to improve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me add that everybody comes up first to give their two cents worth, and then after that, we'll answer everybody, okay? Next on the, oh, where is my list? Next on the list, we have two young ladies, Sammy Darling and Anne McCammon. If you would please come up and give your addresses, who you are and your address, please.
I'm Anne, and my address is 1008 Crestwood Road, Wynwood, PA.
I'm Sammy Darling, and my address is 823 Dover Road, Wynwood, PA. We are both 14, and we are going to be starting ninth grade this fall, and we've already met with our commissioner, Chris Connell, and we asked him the best way to go about legalizing hens, and he told us to get signatures on a, on a petition, and we currently have 379 signatures. All the sign, all the signers are over 18 and are residents of Haverford Township. We and the signers of the petition request that hens be reclassified as domestic animals instead of farm animals.
We understand that roosters have been a problem in the past, and that is why we are not requesting to legalize roosters. Hens are much quieter, and with proper care, they don't smell. Hens also eat ticks, turn weeds into compost, provide educational opportunities to children, and best of all, provide fresh eggs.
Currently, residents are allowed to own hens on any property that is an acre or larger, but most people in the township have a much smaller property. We agree that farm animals need an acre of land. However, hens are very small and don't need much space.
Please consider changing its ordinance because of all the wonderful benefits there are to raising hens.
Uh, thank you so much for your time, and we have a copy of the petition and a little handout with some information.
She spoke so well.
I don't know, at that age, I could have pulled that off. That was pretty good.
Yeah. In my neighborhood, oh, yeah. Because we've got a big issue.
Thank you. Good job. Excellent. Well done. You have nice voice. Nice voice that projects.
Thank you very much, ladies. Next on our list, we have down here Brendan Bates, backyard hens. Getting applause beforehand, that's excellent.
You should wait until you hear what kind of public speaker I am. So, my name's Brendan Bates, I live at 71 Brookline Boulevard. This is my daughter Caroline.
We actually have hens.
Have chickens that the township is asking us to get rid of because we are on less than an acre. So, we wholeheartedly agree with these girls, that they are domestic, that they're family pets. There are pets. Had them for over a year, they're all named.
Caroline Junior, Ethel Nugget, Lorelei Penny Penny, and Lily and Amber.
So, we've had them since the day they were born, we've cared for them, they care, the girls, the neighborhood friends care for these chickens, just like most of you probably do for your cats and your dogs. They've been endless entertainment for the neighborhood, they brought the community together. My neighborhood helped build the coop, they helped take care of them when we were away. It's really a community effort. This past weekend, my girls and I and some of their friends walked around just our block, just the 10 block of Boulevard, the Boulevard of Austin, Pennsylvania, and we have, I think, like 84 more signatures, 62 households that answered the door, just on that block. No one said no. A lot of discussion, but everyone agreed and signed on and thought it was a benefit to the community, to our girls, and to the neighborhood. So, I'll, I'll submit this as well, but I just wanted to point it out. So, really, what I wanted to say was that I don't think that we need to ban chickens at all. If you make them a domestic pet, there's ordinance we already have on the books about noise, about manure, about maintenance of, of pets and, and property that can always be called upon if there's ever a complaint. I also wanted to note that surrounding neighborhoods like Radnor and Ballackinwood and Swarthmore and Media also allow this. So, communities are starting to see through the myths of, you know, chickens are smelly or chickens are loud, and it's really, you know, it's really someone's uncle who's on a farm who heard they were bad, and then when you talk to them, they realize, oh, they're really not, they're not bad, not, they're not loud, properly maintained, there's no odor or anything like that, and they've really been a great addition to us. Lastly, I would like to say that we also built a really nice coop. I had asked Mr. McGarrett to come out and take a look at it, just to see how clean it was, how secure it was, how nice it looked in the backyard, and just to get a sense. So, I'm sure you could ask Jim his, his thoughts on it, but it was a good conversation, and I hope that you guys take, heed these girls' requests and, and classify chickens as domestic. I think it would be great for the township. I want to ask some people to come, and you probably have as well, just in terms of support for chickens.
That's the other half of the room, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Great job, great job. Next on the agenda, on the list number six, Jerry Hart for General Information. Mr. Hart? Good evening. noise, about manure, about maintenance of pets and property that can always be called upon if there's ever a complaint. I also wanted to note that surrounding neighborhoods like Radnor and Ballackinwood and Swathmore and Media also allow this. So communities are starting to see through the myths of, you know, chickens are smelly or chickens are loud, and it's really, you know, it's really someone's uncle who's on a farm who heard they were bad. And then when you talk to them, they realize, oh, they're really not, they're not bad, they're not loud, properly maintained, there's no odor or anything like that, and they've really been a great addition to us. Lastly, I would like to say that we also built a really nice coop. I had asked Mr. McGarry to come out and take a look at it, just to see how clean it was, how secure it was, how nice it looked in the backyard, and just to get his sense. So I'm sure you could ask Jim his thoughts on it, but it was a good conversation, and I hope that you guys take heed these girls' requests and classify chickens as domestic. I think it would be great for the township. Can I ask some people to come, and you probably have as well, just in terms of support for chickens?
That's the other half of the room, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Great job, great job. Next on the agenda, on the list number six, Jerry Hart for general information. Mr. Hart. Good evening.
Jerry Hart, 610 Penfield Avenue. As mentioned earlier tonight, it's clear from President Trump's recent announcement of his plan to withdraw from the Paris Climate Accord that leadership on this issue is not going to come from the federal government. Over 95% of climate scientists agree that global warming is real and that human activity is a major contributor to it. This is an issue that can profoundly affect our children and our grandchildren's lives. This should not be a partisan issue. A conservative person faced with a 95% possibility of a major storm affecting their town would take steps to protect their home and their community. And so too must we, on a local level, take those steps. Because the preparations are not going to be coming, apparently are not going to trickle down from the federal government, we must take steps on a local level to have them bubble up from below. Haverford has made some strides, as mentioned earlier, in controlling its admissions, along with the other things that I mentioned, the CREEC is a very energy-efficient building, and the new municipal building and police station have also been designed in an energy-efficient way. But it's time to do more. Some of the things I think the board could look at is explore purchasing the municipal energy, electrical needs from renewable resources. As mentioned earlier, a comprehensive review of Haverford's progress on its 2007 climate control program. An enhanced commitment to biking and walking trails. And finally, financially committing to upgrading and maintaining our parks and recreation and green spaces. Is imperative, again, it's imperative in light of the fact that the federal government appears to lack leadership on this issue, that we take steps on the local level to begin to address the threat. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, Jennifer Rizzo, dogs and parks. Welcome.
I had no idea how entertaining this could be, so I'm not sure if mine will pull off.
Name and address, please.
Jennifer Rizzo, 816 Martin Avenue in Bryn Mawr, directly across from Preston Park. For eight-plus years now, I bought my house there, and a lot of the draw was the community park. And frankly, I've met so many people, and there are several here from our neighborhood, and I'm speaking on behalf of many who couldn't come, that we want to talk through the signage that says, "No dogs allowed in park." And we've had, since I moved there, and for probably 10 years before, those signs have been up, but it was clear that there's probably 50 to 75 people with their dogs walking through the park on a daily basis. So when the commissioner, when Andy, came through last summer touring the parks and asking for people to come, and the newsletter said to come and discuss what we would like to maybe talk about or change about the parks, this came up. And there's a lot of people who have an interest in making it not feel like we're going to get ticketed by a police officer. And the irony is, it's probably been two or three times in eight years that we've heard from a police officer, and there's a lot of people walking through there. And it just happened, again, about a month and a half ago. And it was a very unpleasant exchange, and I'm a very well-behaved adult that doesn't want to get ticketed, but we also feel that these are part of our family, and they've connected the neighborhood, and there's even neighbors here who don't have dogs and would probably vouch for the exact same thing. So it just seems like the signage is a little ambiguous about what you're allowed to do or not do because tons of people have gone through there regularly and don't get a warning. And perhaps there's something we could look at as possibly, is it more about picking up after? Is there a fine for that? Is it keeping your dog on a leash? Is it, some other parks have signage that kind of reflects that, rather than, "No dogs allowed in park." Because clearly, the dogs have been allowed in the park, but just haven't been ticketed. So it's hard to know. I can't step across the street into the park now, which is not a great feeling. And I don't think it brings together the community like these amazing parks really do. So we're looking to figure out whether there's some conversation. I know there's upgrades to the parks that are underway and under discussion, and if there's a way, at this point, I can go get a petition to, there's plenty of people who couldn't be here tonight that are willing to sign that petition. So if that's the next step, we would like to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And number, okay, and last on the agenda, we have Mr. Michael Levin. Doc Levin, are you in the house? We did not see him earlier.
No.
Mr. Levin out by the back door. Nope, all right, thank you very much. I'm here this evening. Okay, the next part of Citizens Forum is for anybody who wishes to speak on an agenda item. And again, we ask you to keep it to three minutes and express yourself any way you wish, but most of all, mannerly. So I'm going to start, let me start with this side of the room, that there is in the first row, if anybody would like to speak on anything on the agenda tonight. Second row, third row, the last row. On this side of the room, is there anybody in this group right here that would like to speak on anything on the agenda? The first row, second row, the third row, the last row. Well, that takes care of that. Thank you very much. Now we go to the task of addressing your concerns. And the first concern, if you don't mind, what we can do is, I'll tackle this in a backwards way. Jennifer Rizzo about the dogs from Martin Avenue. You are right, there are a lot of people that are bringing their dogs to the parks. Presently, yep, there is a township ordinance in effect. The township, I'm sure in the past, has probably looked the other way because it is a friendly atmosphere, but it only takes one person then to come forward and complain because something did happen. Some of the things we'd have to watch for if we did move in the direction of allowing dogs into parks is, one, there is township property, and there is also school district property. And both entities would have to work together on that. The other thing is that it is very important that people leash their dogs because it's, you see it even in the dog parks that we already have, there are some aggressive dogs out there. And although the owner may think, oh, they're really not that aggressive, it must be your dog. Unfortunately, it doesn't matter, it's, there are aggressive dogs, so having a dog on a leash is very important. And I believe the ordinance is six, six foot? Is that the maximum? I think the, I know there are leashes out there that go on forever. Hit the button, and the dog's already finished its walk, and you're just starting out. But I think a leash is like six feet. Picking up afterwards, absolutely very important, and that is something that is difficult to control, especially after dark. And I think that's the ordinance right now, is that not on property after dusk.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Could I ask Tim Denny to come up, come forward and talk about this, because he talked about this at our work session?
Certainly.
Because this is one of the things that
So those are the three
He mentioned as part of
Big issues that you had was the aggressive pickup and leashes. Mr. Denny?
Yeah. Thank you, Tim.
Was I getting too long? Was that a
No, I just thought he could, might add some more color to this.
We've been talking about this at the park board meetings, too, about the dogs.
Well, as the, as the board may recall, last week when I gave my presentation, one of the things I did recommend was we take a look at this ordinance of dogs and parks because, as the speaker noted, there's a contradiction between what the ordinance says and what's been happening in parks for a lot of years. My recommendation is that we adapt our ordinance to better suit the realities of the times. Over the years, I will say, probably last time I brought it up was about 15 years ago, and I had people really oppose, and I got some of the nastiest letters and emails I ever got, and people for it, and it broke down about even. Prior to that, 10 years before that, I opposed it and got the same kind of reaction. I think times have changed, and the norm is, most people do clean up after their dog. I think dogs have taken on increased significance in people's lives. And the reality is, dogs are in our parks, and I would much prefer to see us have an ordinance that we think is reasonable and we can enforce than have an ordinance. I'm never in favor of laws or signs that we don't plan to enforce. I think it just creates confusion out there. And the ordinance, the way it's written in our books right now is very confusing because it's an amended ordinance that dropped the original part, so it's very confusing. So if this board asked me my recommendation, I would certainly come up with some wording that I would propose to change our ordinance at this time.
Is that something you'd go, get approved by the park board and then come back to us?
I have brought it up to the park board over the last few months, telling them I was going to put it in my recommendations, that I would suggest to the board that we look at our ordinance. I can certainly bring it in front of the park board in our next meeting and
Tim, I think the park board, they really need to be involved in this and help make the decision.
We have been discussing
And some of them are here this evening, so I appreciate them being here. But it's something that they really need to discuss and bring back to this board, what their feelings are.
Like I said, we have been doing that for the last few months, as Rich and Dave can attest.
So you could come back to us maybe next month with a recommendation?
Sure.
Okay.
Tim, and last thing, just the woman who spoke talked about it, and I know I've gotten calls before about dogs in park, and they go to the police. So I mean, if we're leaving it up to the police as to doing this enforcement, part of what we have to consider in terms of a reasonable restriction would be how are we going to enforce it and not just duplicate and create something else that's unenforceable? You know, if we're going to meet the needs in terms of leashes and picking up after yourself, it has to be something that we can reasonably enforce.
And the other thing is, we have the dog park over at the reserve, and we have to clarify the hours for residents and neighbors and make sure we, you know, honor those for both.
There's some confusion there.
Well, that's something the parks board will have to come up with.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Denny, thank you very much. Okay, then let's, let me go with the backyard hens. Presently, there is an ordinance that does restrict it. I will say that I, my hat is off to you young ladies for taking this on when you came to me and said, "We would like to have chickens." And I thought, oh, wonderful. But, and I mean that in the most sincere way, because a few years ago, as I told you, that there were a lot of people that were opposed to it, opposed to roosters, roosters were a big thing and what have you, and chickens went along with it. But I, because you brought this to my attention, all of a sudden, I happened to notice, it's like, you know, when you buy a new car, all of a sudden you notice that everybody's got that same car. Well, you brought this to my attention, and I realized there are an awful lot of people out there that really don't mind having chickens. And the important thing was, is that you went out and you got a petition to find out what the other neighbors thought as well in your community, and it branched out farther than that. I think you had to take people off that petition that wanted to sign it, but they didn't live in Haverford Township, you know, or even in Pennsylvania. So kudos to you for doing that. That's a great introduction to working with government, and I hope you continue to move on that, to being involved in local government, or local community. I don't always want to say government, but local community. So this evening, or let me address, as I always do, respectfully, any other commissioners wish to address this.
Well, the only thing I would say is maybe bring this to the environmental committee and have them take a look at it. And the reason why I say that, believe me, I'm all for hens. I wish, you know, I'd like to have them. I don't have the time to take care of them, but I'd like to have them. I think the one concern is the rodent problem that's going on in Haverford Township, and indeed in Delaware County. I don't know, that's the only concern that I would have.
I'm sorry? Well, we actually, let's, but, I know, we can't have a back and forth, I'm sorry.
But rodents will go after the chicken feed and food, the way they go after grass seed if it's in your shed. But it's not something I say we shouldn't take a look at, we should. And maybe, you know, I don't know, have the environmental committee look at it and report back to the board and our committee.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Connel.
Mr. McGarry?
First, I'm not going to be chicken here, I'm going to tell you how it is. I mean, Brendan Bates had me over to his house, these young ladies did a good job up here at the podium, and Mr. Bates, really, when I was there, I was quite impressed at the way everything is handled over there with his coops and the way the chickens are and how they reacted. And I have to say, Brendan's had them for years, he stated, and never have I received one call from anybody close to Brendan Bates as to having chickens in the backyard. And I have to speak, I'm going to say right straight out that if everybody's chickens are like Brendan Bates, I favor them all.
Mr. President, if I remember correctly, we had a pretty healthy debate about this issue, and I'm trying to look it up right now, and I think it was August of 13. It's, I would recommend to all of us that we look back at the video of that meeting and see what issues were brought up, you know, when we changed that ordinance. It was, as I recall, not, certainly not 9-0.
I think the rooster was the issue.
Yeah, I mean, there were issues about roosters, and it was actually a fairly comedic conversation about roosters and chickens and hens and, you know.
But that was the original complaint, was that somebody had a rooster that was making noise.
And I think we worried at the time about over-inclusiveness or under-inclusiveness. But I think, you know, it just would benefit all of us before our next meeting to go back and look at the August of 2013 meeting, at the five or 10 minutes that we spent, it was probably knowing us, 25 minutes that we spent talking about that issue. And just to reacquaint ourselves with the cons as well as the pros, and even to reevaluate our own positions that we might have taken. I do not remember, other than the fact that it passed, I don't remember how any of us, including myself, voted for it.
Yeah, I don't remember.
But I do remember the biggest concern was roosters and the noise that they made. But again, it was just four short years ago that we, that we had a lengthy, lengthy discussion and a lot of public input about this. And, you know, that's available to us, so we should, we should look at it.
In fact, I think Jane Hall introduced that resolution.
Jane did.
Yeah.
Well, can I
Just one clarification, the original debate was in the July meeting. It was, so that was where the lengthier debate was, July 8, 2013.
Oh, so the second reading was August.
And the second reading was the August.
I stand corrected, Mr. Siegel.
I was just, I was going to ask if Lori Woodup could just maybe step forward and give her thoughts and what other townships are doing, if she knows what other townships have done in this area.
I'm not aware of many local ordinances that regulate chickens. I'm aware that many local ordinances do regulate roosters. I would have to take a look to see what the housing standards are for something like that. We previously did allow chickens to be in, I want to say enclosures that where there was a minimum setback, and I want to say 25 feet from a property line, but I'd have to go back and check.
But you don't know of any, like Lower Marion or Radnor that restricts hens?
I'm not aware of that.
Yeah. Were they, are they considered farm animals in those townships, or are they, you don't know?
I really don't know.
Yeah, okay. It'd be interesting to see how other townships have looked at this issue as well.
Non-poisonous snakes are considered farm animals under our ordinance. I just looked it up real fast. I mean, so, anybody I mean, so, anybody who's got one in a terrarium in their house or anything, because they can live in about one cubic foot, as long as you give them enough stuff to play with.
That's okay, I'll pass on some.
Evidently, they're farm animals too, so we might want to examine all of this.
And our solicitor's office may have some experience, because Springfield does have an ordinance that does have some regulation of chickens and other animals, so I don't know what the history was there, obviously.
I mean, I know that we, one of the things we addressed was the issue that we were putting size restrictions on the property. I mean, I think one acre is the limit, and, I mean, here in Haverford Township, you know, the overwhelming majority of our residents live in significantly smaller properties than that. And so, you know, we understood the ramifications at the time we did it, but I, we may have been over-inclusive.
Okay. Anybody else? So we actually will have the health department look into it and our zoning, and to see if we can come up with a resolution to this, such as allowing it. Not saying we are, please, but we are going to move forward and look into, Brendan, and to look into this situation, to see what we can do to rectify it. Okay? We have, we have received, I know I have received several emails, and one email opposing it. So, I mean, that speaks for itself also. Mr. Holmes, you were about to say something?
I just want to hope that we can give some kind of amnesty right now to Mr., I forget your name, Brady?
Bates.
Bates.
He's over here.
At least while we're evaluating this, nobody's going to come and take his chickens in the middle of the night. I feel like Obama on Thanksgiving Day. I just think we should spare, I think we should spare these chickens.
Well, why don't we just look at it as no harm, no foul?
Nice! Awful!
Oh, wow, ba-dum-bum.
Oh, boy.
Oh, boy, I've seen it all.
Lot of people in the audience. I promised Brendan that I would stop by, I'd like to see it. It's pretty neat. Oh, he's saying all is welcome, but I'm going to call him and go out there and take a look at it.
Take some pictures.
They don't vote, Larry, by the way.
I don't think I have the chicken vote in Haverford.
Those chickens are.
All right. Okay, and so thank, so next month, we shall have, we should have an answer for you, okay? Thank you very much for everything, for coming forward tonight. So next, our list of speakers, Mr. Hart, would you mind if we also include that into Mrs. Lutz together? That's okay. So the thing is, what is the local community doing now that we are faced with this situation internationally, or nationally with us? And Haverford Township, as you know, has had its climate action change, and it was, I think they joined in 2007, passed in 2008, and what have you. And going back even as far as 2000, when Haverford State Hospital was the, our big forefront for taking land over this, I was on, actually with Tim Denny and all, to preserve 120 acres of that property. Keeping in mind, our train of thought has always been, this board, even before I got here, has always been on the environment. Some of the things that the township has also already done is the Krec building, which is LEED certified. For those that don't know, the recreational facility up at Haverford Reserve, when that was built, that's a LEED certified building where it is completely environment-friendly. It has a geothermal system for heating, taking the heat from the, from underneath the ground and, as opposed to electrical or gas emissions. We also have, our township building today, the police station, is being built in that same process, where it is, now, it can be LEED certified. Is it gold or platinum?
Platinum, platinum.
Okay.
It is LEED certifiable platinum.
Okay, so, so in that, what is there? The green roof, it's going along, what are some of the things that we have there? Larry, if you want to add lib on that, on our new building?
On the new building, we, in fact, we met with Lori today in construction meeting, they're starting the construction of the green roof, so we're even going to have a green roof. Even the parking lots, the stadium right on that complex, all of that, we put $140,000 within the last two years of changing all the lighting inside the stadium and the parking lot to LED.
The brine. Larry, the brine.
Yeah, we have, we have a number of things that.
We have the brine, with the, the new vehicle maintenance garage.
That's what I was going to say.
When that was built, actually, it's heated by old.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Old oil, you know, from the trucks.
Right.
The old diesel and what have you, and that's what heats the building. And instead of air conditioning, there's 12-foot fans on the ceiling. So, so again, that footprint, you know, is very small, you know, and so the township is moving in that direction. Last year, what we used, 25,000 gallons?
You're also combining, you're not just combining those two buildings, you're also combining the rec building down at 599. That building will be combined into the new building, so you're, you're taking three buildings that are using fuel to heat and to, obviously, for air conditioning, and putting that all into one building, which is a LEED certified platinum building. So that's, that's a big removal of, or making our carbon footprint a little smaller.
The board, the board has also supported EAC for the rain gardens. And the big thing with rain gardens, and I've said this before, and I say it again year after year, as commissioner, it's not, this is not a me thing, this is a we thing. And so together, you know, it's not just the commissioners pushing support for rain gardens, it's every one of us out there that looks at your garden and says, gee, how can I help in this, working together, maybe putting in a rain garden? And reach out to EAC and say, "Look, I have a, I have a property here, how can I, how can I put one in? What can I do to help?" So it's all of us here together.
Can I just add?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry to be jumping in here, but we also received the Community Green Award from the PA Horticultural Society, and an award from Villanova for our rain gardens and environmental education program, which is up at the Krec, as well as, in 2013, we received the first Green Park Award from the PA Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the development and maintenance up at Haverford Reserve. Everything we did there, it's not just the building, it's the grounds of the building, it's the rain chains, it's the geothermal power, it's, everything up there is, is made to protect the environment. And it was a Brownsfield before that, and I see Dan.
Uh-oh, they're sneaking out.
So those are some of the things that we've done.
And then the tree tender program, the commitment to plant 1,000 trees in 10 years.
Up to 800?
Yeah, we're up to 800.
100 new trees.
I guess it was about eight years ago, tree tenders, myself, Gene Angel, and Mary Courtney put this group together for, and our plan was to plant 1,000 trees in 10 years, and we are at 800, at eight years, so we are going to make our goal. So that's a big part of what we're doing to.
And yes, I am a tree tender.
That's, Chris is also a tree tender, he's joined us. We have a lot of people who show up and help us plant trees.
And the trail program, too.
So here's an example, the Haverford Township Streetlight retrofit program, it's presently going on now. The first ward, the fourth, excuse me, and the third ward, I believe, have already had these retrofitted lights put in, the LED lights. There's been 780 lights so far that it would put in to date, taking out the old sodium vapor lights and putting in the LED lights. Now, by doing that, the investment was, what, 625, over $625,000?
Just this year.
For this year, and it has reduced the kilowatt-hours by over 20,000. It has also dropped the sulfur dioxide down 102, over 103,000 grams. The carbon dioxide, that has dropped 177 metric tons. So those are, those are some things that are happening right now, just for those lights. And hopefully, by the end of next year or so, we should have the entire township.
Well, it's going to be over and over in an eight-year period, but yeah, every year, because it is, it is a commitment.
Well, it's.
You know, just in the last few years, the township, this township, and again, we've done some phenomenal things, and I put Haverford Township far above any other community in the area. Well over $2 million investment in things that this, this board has just mentioned, as well as things like the brine program. We're the only community in Delaware County that manufactures our own salt brine. Every time we do that, we're, we're putting less salt into our streams, we're utilizing less vehicles, obviously, less fuel, less carbon discharge, all of those things that the town has done. So we're doing a lot of great things, probably where we're failing is probably not telling our community that we're doing the things as much. But it's, it's difficult to do that, we have such a big township, and we're running so many activities, so we need to start tooting our horn a little bit more.
Now, we do have two tasks before us. Commissioner?
And the other thing, this may not seem as noticeable, but the township is virtually paperless now. They're reliant on paper, and traditional technology has virtually disappeared. Codes department is electronic, most of the items are, and that eliminates a significant area of waste, toner, paper, trees, et cetera. And we have added the use of technology throughout every department, and that becomes a big saving in the long run, and will be dramatically improved in the new building, where we'll have the proper infrastructure, which we don't have in the antiquated buildings that just simply can't handle it.
Mr. Holmes?
We do have a request in front of us, and I want us to consider that request as wrong as, I want to suggest another, and then I want to give something back, maybe, maybe ask Ms. Lutz and Dr. Hart to do this. In addition to asking the federal government to, you know, the United States Congress to act, I think we should ask the General Assembly in Pennsylvania to act, and the reason is because all of this, because we have to work our way down to, to our local governments, and relying on the federal government to act is for us to rely on the vagaries of political will, and frankly, the change in the White House, which, you know, I'm sure a number of you, as active as you are on the environment, are as disappointed as I am. But there are 2,861 municipalities in the state of Pennsylvania, and if I ran for governor next month and said I will build 2,000 buildings in Pennsylvania that are all LEED platinum, some people would be very happy, and other people would be very upset about that, the kind of commitment, the money necessary to do that. But when every locality, when every local government takes it upon themselves to build their own buildings that way, that's what will get accomplished. Everything we've done here, if that gets multiplied by 2,561 times here in Pennsylvania, it will be extraordinary. It will make a worldwide impact on the reduction of gases. And as Mr. Gentili said, he very carefully used the word "investment" instead of expenditures or taxes, because it's an investment to spend the money on these lights because of what we save. The geothermal device, the geothermal heating and cooling system in the, in the Community Recreation and Environmental Center, cost us about $650,000 extra dollars on top of our budget to build, and it was a concern. And there was political risk on this board when a number of us, I think it was every one of us, agreed to that change. And why? Because eight years later, we have already saved all of that money on the extra expense we would have had on the heating and cooling. And unlike a traditional heating and cooling system, which by now would start breaking down, the typical geothermal system has 25 good years in it, so we will save a ton of money. The investment in these lights will save a ton of money for the township. So I ask you two to make sure you tell all your friends in other municipalities, and that it's spread out, that yes, we can use our power to go to the Congress and go to the General Assembly and say, "You need to do something about this." But I will remind you, the greatest impact has already been undertaken by this board, and has been done so for the last, certainly the last 12 years that I've been on it, and continues to do so, and I hope we keep setting a good example. But a great public example we'd set now, Mr. President, is if we do indeed pass a resolution, not only to tell the Congress that they should act, but to also tell the Pennsylvania General Assembly they should act as well. That's all I have.
And I think the second issue is also updating the Climate Change Action Plan.
Sure.
And that is, if we move that direction, that's a committee that we can, this board can appoint.
Just, just to comment on.
Mr. McCuskey?
I'm not going to reiterate about the resolution that Commissioner Holmes just talked about. But on the second one, I think it is worthwhile, we talked to various times today about how the initial plan for this Climate Change Action Plan was developed in 2007 and eventually passed in 2008 and 2009. So it's 10 years old, essentially, from its beginning. So I think it's worthwhile to start the process in terms of evaluating that and determining if we need a new one, and if we need a new one, what should be our plan for the next 10 years. So along those lines, and part of, and just to, it'll also give the township, as Mr. Gentili said, an ability to toot its own horn. So if we can have a presentation sort of that spells out what was in this Climate Action Change Plan for, for the residents, and it'll also give us the opportunity to discuss the things that we have done over the last 10 years, the accomplishments that this board has passed through, and then we can, as a board, you know, some of us weren't on the board in 2008, and would probably like to have a say in where we're going in the next 10 years. So I think it is a worthwhile venture to at least examine over the course of the next couple of months.
But I'd just like to add to that, that before this, before this meeting, I spoke with, with my representative to the EAC, which is Dave Schwartz, and spoke to him at length about this, about the Paris issue, and what, what we should be doing, what else can we do? And so what he told me he would, he would do for us is that he'd go back to the EAC, and they would talk about coming forward to the board and bringing us some advi, giving us advice on how to move that forward. So in redoing this plan and seeing what we can do, have it start with the EAC, commissioning the EAC to come forward with, with another plan. Because they've done a great job, really, the EAC has done a great job.
I'm sure they have, but I, I really think it's incumbent on us as a township, and frankly, I think it benefits us as a township, so that Larry, Gentili, and others in the township can not only, you know, address sort of where we're going from here, but it also assesses sort of the costs involved, and it also assesses the costs we've already undertaken. So it will allow us to have a full presentation. I'm not suggesting that the EAC shouldn't make a presentation, but I do think it's incumbent on us as a township to ask for a presentation at a work session or something of that nature, whereby we can say, "Look, these are, these were the standards we laid out in 2009, this is where we've met them, this is where we can still have additional improvement."
Right. But I'm saying, I'm saying have the EAC come forward with recommendations, not a presentation, but come forward with things that we can do right now.
Yeah, well, yeah, and, and there's, you know, those are two, two things, like the EAC will come forward with recommendations for where our climate change plan will go for the next 10 years. But I do think it's a worthwhile exercise, and, you know, Larry indicated, I mean, part of our issue is publication of the achievements that we've had. So I think it's a worthwhile exercise for the township to sort of examine what we've done since 2008, 2009.
Mr. DiMillo?
I think EAC is a good vehicle, and you could have, I think Gene recommended Steve Clark, that's something, it's a public meeting, there's public input, so obviously, the public could have input through the EAC, and have the EAC kind of come back to us with a recommendation for.
Mr. DiMillo, you have some?
Thank you. The geothermal, we should thank, and we've done this in the past, but the Villanova students that came before the board, they did the study and actually recommended it to this board, and this board was very thankful for their input.
Bridmore students?
Sorry?
Yeah, Victor Dennehy and Bridmore, right?
Bridmore.
Yeah, it was Victor Dennehy and Bridmore.
Bridmore College Math Students.
Victor Dennehy Students.
No.
Victor Dennehy and.
Wrong group. Sorry. But I think to Chris's point, how, when he said, and he's been saying this for a long time, this is a we thing, and so we welcome, we welcome community involvement, and we take those suggestions seriously. But having said that, I think we should, we should pass something tonight, if we could. And I'd like, just like to strengthen it a bit and say that the federal government should hold, or try to hold, these foreign countries accountable as well. And if we're going to enter in agreements, these agreements need to be fair to the United States citizens, to the taxpayers, and to the environment. I don't know enough about the Paris Agreement, I won't pretend that I do, I've heard different rumors here and there. I'm trying to do some research, I'm supposed to be getting some information. But even having said that, I think those countries that produce a lot of emissions, like India, Pakistan.
China.
China, especially China. With the, at the risk of sounding like. China, especially China, without the risk of sounding like Trump, I didn't say it like him. But anyway.
You sound a little like him.
A little bit. But he wouldn't pass this stuff.
More and more every day.
He wouldn't pass this stuff. Anyway, so if we can conclude that, I would say the Congress needs to act strongly, you just can't ignore what's going on across the ocean there, you have to look at everything in this world, because we only have one world.
Mr. Leva?
Yeah, I just wanted, I know that, it's Jerry Hart, am I correct? Jerry Hart spoke about the trails, and I'd like to have Tim speak about the trails, because we have quite a system of trails in this township, and we're expanding trails as we're going. So I did want to bring that up, so people know that we are...
Mr. Denny?
Back up again on trails. We're back up on trails.
Trails, let's do it.
Trails.
Did you find a path to the podium, please?
I was just talking about, you know, the set about trails, and how we need to improve trails, I just wanted to talk about what we've done already.
Thank you, Commissioners. As most people know, we have done a lot in the last 10 years regarding trails. Actually, I was just talking to my staff today, as some of you may know, 10 years ago this month, we started demolition at Havreford State, transformed it into Havreford Reserve, and with that process, working with Scout Troop 144 that my son was in at the time, we started building the first trail, and now there's about five miles of trails up there. Of course, we have the Darby Creek Trail, which friends of Havreford Trails was very involved in getting us to grant from DVR PC on that. And we had the Penzy Trail, which Laurie and Dave worked a lot on, and that goes through the center of town here. And the big project that we're working on right now is to see if we can connect all the way from Upper Darby up through the reserve, up to Darby Road, and on up to Radnor, we have a feasibility study that we're doing for the Darby Creek Trail there. So that would be huge, that would be great, if we can make that happen, that would be tremendous. But Havre Township is, because of our geography and because of the things that we have done, is looked at as one of the primary trail communities in Delaware County, and we had a big, our fifth annual Trail Summit up at the community center back in February, and people from all the surrounding communities were here to find out how we were able to do it, and Havre Township, what we're doing, and how we can all continue to work together. My philosophy on trails is do what you can, when you can, where you can. It's a long process, but if you can keep it moving, keep the momentum moving, then great things can happen. So we've done a lot, and I think we're in a good position to do a lot more over the next few years. So again, it's been a team effort, friends of Havreford Trails, especially Rich Kerr, Peter Puglinisi, and all the people who are involved there have been huge partners with us in developing our trail system in the township.
And you also had a concern about upgrading with the parks and all that, you just gave us a presentation on that, and I'll just want to give a real quick Reader's Digest of cost and all the many things of our 33 parks.
Well, what I had suggested to the Commissioners, and Larry Gentili and I had talked about this for a few months, is a lot of our parks are, it's like your home, you know, the roof's not falling in, but as you look around, the kitchen could be upgraded, and the bathroom could be upgraded, that's how a lot of our parks are, especially with our infrastructures, our pathways, our fencing, some of our courts, and just adjusting to the times. So I had made a presentation to the board last week, that they look at funding, what I call generational funding, of anywhere from $3 to $5 million to really try and upgrade our whole park system, our ballfields, our playgrounds, our fences, our courts, every part of our parks, and looking at our trees, we have a lot of invasive species in the township that we really need to get a handle on. It's not just here, but it's everywhere in Southeast Pennsylvania. So it's an exciting time in parks, and I know the board has been very supportive of our parks programs.
Thank you, Mr. Denny.
Tim, is your presentation on the website from last week?
It is. You can YouTube, June 5, 2017, on YouTube for the Commissioners' meeting, for the work session, and if anybody wants to YouTube the, for the HENS, it was July 2013, you can go on YouTube and see those meetings, okay?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
In order to pass this this evening, the suggestion I made about the federal government being stronger with the foreign countries, do we need a solicitor to draft something this evening for us?
I think we should, I think we should just read it the way it is, and then we can add to it whatever we want, and then change it.
Why don't we just, why don't we, there's no rush to do this, why don't we get the information from the staff and the solicitor next month, and then have a discussion, rather than try and, rather than try and pass something when you're not getting all the opinions?
I'm fine, I'm fine with that.
The other half, who may or may not want to provide comments to us, we should be able to listen to them, because we advertise it for next month, and then we're fine.
You're right, Bill, I'm fine with that.
So just research first, and then, and then...
Guys, you understand, I mean, is that all right? We're taking, we're going to look at it.
Okay, so we must move on. Thank you very, very much for a wonderful Citizens Forum, super job, everybody who was here tonight. But we must move forward.
I'd make a motion to take a five-minute recess, if anybody wants to leave that came here that...
Who wants to leave? Five-minute recess.
Then we get down to the important stuff, right?
Next on the agenda, item number eight, approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve regular meeting minutes of May 8, 2017.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McGarity. Discussion, take the roll, please.
D'Amelio?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
I was unavoidably unavailable for that meeting, I abstain.
Mr. McGarity?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Leva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes, motion passes. Item number nine, approval of the warrants.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holmes?
Mr. President, I move we approve warrant number six of 2017 totaling $7,266,942.73, comprising the general sewer fund payroll for May 18, 2017, in the amount of $687,793.63; the general sewer fund payroll for June 1 of 2017, in the amount of $969,372.12; the general fund disbursements, number six of 2017, in the amount of $1,333,627.86; sewer fund disbursements, number six of 2017, excuse me, in the amount of $488,342.50; community development block grant fund disbursement, number six of 2017, in the amount of $90,267.43; capital project fund dispersments, number six of 2017, in the amount of $1,803,533.09; debt service for the 2000 series, in the amount of $183,596.44, that is interest only; and debt service on our 2010 series of bonds, interest and principal, in the amount of $1,705,131,025, and a credit card statement ending May 27, 2017, in the amount of $5,278.41.
Second.
And it's seconded by Mr. Wexler, and that's a 2016 series, okay.
Mr. President, any questions that our auditor had after reviewing these warrants he raised to our staff, and in particular, our finance director, those questions have been answered to his satisfaction, he has recommended these warrants be approved, and I agree with him and recommend the same.
Thank you. Any further? Please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarity?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Leva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes. Motion passes. Item number 10, ordinance P. 6, 2017, medical marijuana for second reading.
Mr. Chairman?
I'd like to make the motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P. 6, 2017, amending and supplementing Chapter 182 zoning to add provisions establishing certain new definitions and further establishing and regulating medical marijuana dispensary facilities as conditional use in the C. 5 Shopping Center Commercial District, and further establishing and regulating medical marijuana grower slash processor facilities as conditional uses in the... Is that L.I.?
Light Institute.
What's that?
Light.
It's the Light Institution. Light, okay, they have light. There's a L.I.N. before that. Light Industrial.
Light Industrial.
L.I.N., yeah.
The Lynn Light.
Second.
Seconded, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Gentlemen, any conversation, discussion?
Just to reiterate, as Kelly's presentation last month, we're really, you know, we're passing a zoning ordinance here, it's not really, we're not voting on medical marijuana. As we said, you can go back to last month and look at it, but Kelly gave a lengthy presentation explaining why it was in our best interest to pass this ordinance, and why we're doing it now.
There being nothing further, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarity?
Yeah, well, if Kelly's for it, I'm for it. Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Leva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes, motion now becomes ordinance, yes. Item number 11.
Mr. President.
Mr. Leva.
Ordinance number P. 7, 2017, the sale of 516th Eagle Road at a public auction, this is the second reading. Motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P. 7, 2017, authorizing the sale of township property at 516 South Eagle Road, Haverford Township, at a public auction.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McGarity.
And I just want to clear that up, the property is the old, for those of you who know where that is, it's the old, well, it was a schoolhouse, one of many, in Havreford Township, it was willed to the Historical Society, it was left to the township for the, obviously, the Historical Society can't own it, so it was left to the township, the Historical Society found no historical significance to the property, they then asked us to put the property off for sale, so they could take that money and put it into places like Nider Hall and other locations throughout the township that are historically significant, and so that's what we've done. We also de-restricted the property, that it could only build two lots facing Eagle Road, so that no more than two homes can be built there, including the structure that's there. So if you want to build one house and the structure that's there, or knock down the structure and put up two, two new homes. So you can't put flag lots in or anything like that, I know people had concerns about that, that cannot be done, it cannot be done in Havreford Township right now, you can't put a flag lot in, so that's...
Anything further on this second reading? There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes stepped out?
Down, right here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. McGarity stepped out. Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Leva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes, motion passes, now ordinance. Item number 12, ordinance P. 8, 2017, is repealing bicycle registrations, second reading.
Mr. President.
Mr. Siegel?
Motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance P. 8-2017 to repeal sections 55-2 through 55-13, as well as 55-23 and 55-25, and amend Section 55-24 of the Havreford Township Code relating to the licensing and registration of bicycles.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. D'Amelio. D'Amelio, any discussion?
No.
There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarity?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Leva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes, motion passes. Item number 13, P. 9, 2017, and this is a first reading on the general obligation bond issue.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holmes?
Mr. President, I move that we adopt ordinance number, sorry, ordinance, or P. 9 of 2017, amending ordinance number 23, 2735 of 2014 enacted on November 10, 2014, to revise the capital projects to be financed with the proceeds of the Township's general obligations bond series 2014.
Second.
Mr. President.
And that was seconded by Mr. Lewis, Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, what we have here is, we have a situation that the 2014 bond had included within it about $3.5 million of stormwater improvements and other capital projects associated with that kind of infrastructure, and those projects will not, are not, and will not be shovel-ready in 2016. But we have accelerated the purchase of fire apparatus in the amount of $2 million. So we are amending this ordinance, it's all proper, it's been looked at by our bond council, and this is the proper way to go about it, to reallocate some of the bond proceeds to the fire apparatus, and use the proceeds of later bond issues, which we would have used anyway for that, to finish the stormwater improvements. We still have $1,000,000.17 dedicated to previous and current stormwater and sewer improvements, but we need to make this adjustment so that we can use the money now while we need it and while we have it.
Any further discussion, questions?
Don't we need a stormwater improvement?
We do, but the projects, the projects that we're doing are longer-term, and as I understand from Mr. Gentili and from Ms. Cuthbertson, those projects won't be done before we do the fire apparatus, and rather than borrowing extra money for the fire apparatus in 2017, we can wrap this into financing in 2018, which will include finishing the township building and potentially working on the library.
But you're saying that we will be putting that money back in?
Exactly.
Okay.
We're just putting, we'll borrow that money again the next...
Yeah, and so, so people understand, when we pass, when we first did the initial bond resolution, we list public projects that we're going to use that money for, those things are not set in stone, provided you go through the proper procedures of publicizing and changing any things you do, and you continue to use the money under authorized purposes under the Act. And certainly, the construct, we've done this before, borrowing township money to fund township apparatus, whether it's replacement or new equipment, is one of the uses we've used township financings for in the past, and look, it's likely to continue to be what we do township financings for in the future. And right now, it worked out with our scheduling.
Anything further? There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarity?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Leva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes, motion passes. Item number 14, P. 10, 2017, traffic first reading.
Mr. President, motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance P. 10, 2017, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways. Rescind 175-91 Schedule 16, parking of all vehicles prohibited at all times on Hurst Terrace East Side between driveways leading to 34 East Eagle Road, approximately 118 feet north of East Eagle Road, and add 175-94 Schedule 19, parking time limited on Hurst Terrace East Side anytime, two hours, 140 feet north of East Eagle Road. Removal special purposes parking zones in front of 178 Juniper Road and on Foster Avenue on the side of 178 Juniper Road.
Second.
Yes, I would like to add to that, 15-minute parking down at the scadium by, not down by the police, but back by the, where the hamburgers are, and the entrance to that building. And there is room there for another spot, 15-minute parking only.
Okay, so you're requesting, and we did mention this before we left at the work session, so you wish to add to this ordinance, 15-minute parking in front of 1010 Darby Road for one spot only. Chief, is that what it is, 1010?
Yes.
The scadium?
No, it's not ten-ten, that's the police section.
Okay, what's the...
Ten... What do I have to say?
First reading, so we can... Okay. Okay, and that is for one space at the end?
Yeah. Yes.
What is it now?
It's regular metered parking.
So we have to...
Oh, great, okay.
Do you need a motion to amend, and then presumably you'll accept?
So, Mr. McCloskey?
Mr. McGarrett should make a motion to amend, we'll second it, and then...
All right, and that is his...
Are you making a, you're making a motion to amend?
That is his motion to amend.
Yes.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Siegel. Okay.
And then you accept. I accept the amendment.
Okay. Any further discussion? Please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes, the motion passes with the amendment. Item number fifteen is a resolution, number twenty-five fifty-three, twenty seventeen, Citizens Commission, and that's for redistricting. Mr. Lewis?
Do you...
Motion to...
Or is that Mr. Holmes?
Doesn't matter. I'll second it if you read it. Motion to adopt resolution number two thousand fifty-three dash two thousand seventeen that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford Commonwealth, Pennsylvania, County of Delaware does hereby support legislative efforts to secure expeditious action to either amend the Pennsylvania Constitution to assign the decennial task of state legislative and congressional redistricting to an independent citizens' redistricting commission or institution legislation designed to achieve the aforementioned goals.
Second.
Mr. Lewis and Mr. Holmes.
I think we're looking at the, there were two proposals, and the one that I'm suggesting that we adopt is the one that was unanimously adopted by the lower merion Board of Commissioners.
Is this the one fifteen, Andy?
Have all cut, what's that?
This one?
Yeah.
Is this what you're talking about?
Yeah.
What's that?
What's that?
Okay. I'm sorry, is somebody else?
This is the one that we just, I distributed at the work session last week. It's very similar, I don't know what the exact differences are, but it passed unanimously by the lower merion Board of Commissioners. So I think it achieves the same, the same end result. Is it the one that is attached or not? Let me see, let me just...
Attached, yeah.
Yeah, it's attached.
Here it is right here, you want to read that?
Okay. But Andy, it doesn't have your language about drawing ten... No, it doesn't, but I'm happy with it. I think it just gets complicated with that. Look, I certainly agree with the revisions, do we...
Do we want to read this? Do we want to read it?
There are a number of people here, I mean, it's where, I think this is a resolution worth reading aloud before we pass it.
That sounds like a good idea.
Go ahead and do that.
I just mentioned that.
Chris just said to me, we should read this aloud, and then you...
I'm happy to do it.
Okay, Mr. Lewis, is that okay with you?
Yeah, or you can do it, or you can do it, Chris.
You seconded it, so go ahead, please.
Resolution two thousand fifty-three of two thousand seventeen, a resolution supportive improved legislative and congressional redistricting in Haverford Township, whereas the citizens of the Township of Haverford and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania deserve a fair, fully transparent, impartial, and depoliticized process of the decennial drawing of state legislative and congressional districts of near equal population, and whereas, at times, state legislative and congressional redistricting has resulted in gerrymandered districts which favor a political party over others, and whereas such gerrymandering of state legislative and/or congressional districts may negatively impact our representative democracy, and whereas process devoid of political motivation or partisanship will help achieve the following goals: ensure a fair, accurate, and transparent state legislative and congressional redistricting process that respects political subdivisions in communities of interest, prohibit districts from being drawn to favor or discriminate against a political party or any candidate, ensure the use of impartial and sound methodology and public input when setting district boundaries, and fully comply with the constitutional requirement that, quote, "no county, city, incorporated town, borough, township, or ward," end quote, "be divided," quote, "unless absolutely necessary," end quote. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford does hereby support legislative efforts to secure expeditious action to either amend the Pennsylvania Constitution to assign the decennial task of state legislative and congressional redistricting to an independent citizens' redistricting commission or institute legislation designed to achieve the aforementioned goals. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be delivered to the Pennsylvania Senate and House of Representatives, resolved this twelfth day of June, two thousand seventeen.
Any...
By everybody.
You know, I just have a concern that, you know, I think it's a little bit wide open, this independent, because I want to make sure that it really is bipartisan, and we have an equal amount of Republicans, Democrats, and Independents. I think Independents really are huge in this country, and they need to be involved in it, and I think it's wide open, just saying that. I think we need to, we need to take a look at this and make sure that what we're passing is exactly what we're trying to accomplish here, and I'm not so sure that's doing that here. Now, we have a committee, we have a redistricting committee, we've had it for a number of years where some of you have met, and it was very fair. Would you, would you not, would you say the last one was pretty fair?
Yeah, but we haven't done a, we fixed the old redistricting.
Well, you were supposed, we were supposed to meet your committee, who was on the committee?
We did a great job fixing the previous one.
Okay, well, who was on the committee, who's on the committee, redistricting committee?
We have a new committee, but that committee is dedicated toward the redistricting of Haverford Township.
No, I understand that, but I'm saying, there needs to, I think we need to work on this more. I don't, I don't think that this is something we should pass right now. And I'm all for fair redistricting, I'm totally for it, but I want to make sure that it is really bipartisan, that Independents are in it.
Well, I just, go ahead.
Just to interject, hopefully, maybe to alleviate some of your concerns, Commissioner D'Amelio, but, I mean, I think, I think there's a distinction between, you know, setting up the process by which we want to get it done, and that would be, if we were setting up the process that the state was going to use in terms of redistricting, we would want to make sure that there were provisions in place to fully assure that it was a depoliticized process, and that it was bipartisan, and all those other things. But what we're doing at this level in this resolution is, we're not, we're not telling the state legislature, this is the process you have to follow. We're simply saying in this resolution, this is, you know, this is, this is something we want you to consider as you move forward in your redistricting of state legislature and congressional districts, and we would hope that you would take these considerations into effect, so it's not...
You're not saying that, you're really not saying that.
But sure you are, you're saying...
No, you're not. You're saying independent citizens' redistricting, you are telling them, but you're not saying, I mean, we really should, we should say, we want to make sure that it really is bipartisan, that independent voters are included, why can't we say that?
Well, I just, I think you're just, you're...
Why can't we take it to our redistricting committee? Why can't we do that?
It does, let me just, let me just read this last line here.
I'm sorry, you find that funny, sir?
Legislative and congressional redistricting to an independent citizen redistricting commission, please.
Gentlemen, wait a second, Mr. Oliva has the floor, please.
Just want to read this last line, or institute legislation designed to achieve the aforementioned goals. So what it's saying is, in our resolution, that it's not telling the legislature how to do it, just to get to that, it doesn't say you have to set up an independent council, it's just saying to the legislature, we want you to follow what the Constitution says. However you get to that point is up to you.
Yeah, I, Maria, I understand.
Okay.
Exactly what he said. I still don't agree with it, and I, and I would like to go to our committee, and I'm willing to be there to talk about it, to get something together that I feel comfortable with, so I would ask that we table this until the committee gets together.
Is there a motion to table?
I mean, I...
Is there a motion to table?
I'm sorry, I'll throw, yeah, I'll do it, I'll throw a motion to table this.
Motion to table, I second it.
And it's seconded by Mr. McGarrett. And let me write this down. And we'll take the roll on it.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
No.
Mr. Siegel?
No.
Mr. Lewis?
No.
Mr. Holmes?
No.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
No.
And Mr. Connell?
No.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes, sir.
This is a comment I've used in the past. There's no need to make the perfect the enemy of the good. This is a resolution that we are sending, one of, as I mentioned earlier, twenty-five-hundred-and-sixty-one municipalities in Pennsylvania that we hope all tell the state legislature that we want them to change the way they do things. We'll never get any kind of, I mean, forget unanimity, you won't even get a plurality of what people think the right decision is, and we'll leave it to the General Assembly to come up with something that they think is better, you know, works. The process now, and I've been intimately involved in it because I was on the Supreme Court in ninety-one, working for the Chief Justice when we, when we did the ninety-one reapportionment in the state, the process currently under our state constitution guarantees partisanship. It's the House leader, Senate leader, the House minority leader, and the House, and the Senate minority leader, they pick four people, and those four people pick a fifth person, and if you, it's just, it's a catastrophe.
So a question, if this committee, this independent committee cannot, cannot come to an agreement on redistricting, what happens then? Do you know what happens?
Well, I don't know, what you hope to do is have a committee that has an odd number of people, so, I mean, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court has the ultimate jurisdiction...
I'm sorry, that's not what this, this says, that's not what this is saying, it's not pointing out that it goes to the Supreme Court or anything like that, it's saying to, it's just supporting what we're trying to do here.
A resident should know exactly what happens. Don't they have a right to know?
Well, they do know what happens, and this is what happens.
We're supposed to be transparent, so let's talk about it.
This is what happens. We have four hundred and thirty-five congressional seats in the United States, and because in the last thirty years of crazy reapportionment and gerrymandering, we have less than twenty-five competitive seats in the House now, that is unheard of in our history, and that is a direct consequence of the efforts to redraw districts simply to keep the numbers straight but paying no attention to old political boundaries, natural boundaries, or anything of the sort. So as a consequence, you've got the districts you've seen here in Pennsylvania, our own district is one of the, is considered among the top ten gerrymandered districts in the United States, the district that Congressman Meehan currently, currently represents in the House, and every state has some example of ridiculous redistricting. And that, the consequence of that is that for four hundred and ten of the four hundred and thirty-five seats in the House in the United States, the battle is only in the primary, it isn't in the general. And so, that, that's the effort that folks are trying to do at the local level and stop the federal government and stop their states who have the authority to do the redistricting from engaging in this. So we could spend months, you and I could, and all nine of us could, trying to come up with the perfect cure, and we don't need the perfect cure. We have to tell them that what they have isn't working and they need to fix it, whether they seek to amend the Constitution or pass law. That's like we did, that's like we did here in Haverford, I mean, you remember the plan, I mean, it was the most sliced-up and diced-up gerrymandered plan for the township you've ever seen, bringing the fifth ward up to the edge of my flowerbed, you know, sending messages which were wrong.
And it was wrong, it was definitely wrong, and I worked to change that.
Two and a half years of fighting, and we wasted a lot of money. I know you did, this board changed it.
Mr. Lewis has the floor.
I'm sorry.
We lost two and a, with two and a half years fighting it, we wasted probably hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars getting it corrected, and now you have a plan that you can see is compact and contiguous, and you look at the township, the ward maps, and they make sense. Before it looked like a, just a, as I said, a sliced and diced gerrymandered township, and that's why I support, because I, we personally were victims of this gerrymandering here in Haverford Township, and the taxpayers were as well. That's why I support it.
So was I. And I want to be clear, I agree with that, and I remember that, certainly don't want that, I'm just not comfortable with this right now, the way it is. Mr. Siegel?
Yeah, well, I...
Both for fair redistricting and not, no gerrymandering.
I think we have to look at this two ways. One is, it's not our role to draft proposed legislation for the legislature, this is aspiration, this, I don't believe we are. This is an aspirational goal of what we want to see with the legislature, and it changes dramatically, the current, recommends a change that's dramatically different from the current process, that always amazes me when I drive out on Route thirty and I enter Lancaster County on an election year and see Representative Meehan and whomever is running against him signs, and I find it hard to believe that just beyond gap, they have the same interests as residents of Haverford. It's also, you know, an issue that thankfully, before I was on this board, this board corrected when the ward maps were redrawn, my former house still remains that side of the block, conveniently outside of the fourth ward, thankfully I moved before that, and we had the quadrangle, which was disenfranchised from one full election for commissioners. So this board has had a policy or a, an interest or concern that cuts across all of our party or other lines to make certain that redistricting is done in a fair way, and that's what I think this accomplishes.
I'd call the question, Mr. President.
Mr. D'Amelio, did you have, is there some wording that you wanted to change on here?
No, no, I mean, look...
I agree with Steve because of the fact that we're in charge of redistricting for Haverford Township, and, you know, you can send a letter off all you want, but we understand what we went through in Haverford Township, nobody got more redistricting than I did when they took streets out of this second ward, out of the seventh ward, I had the Mothard Avenue, then I had three streets in the third ward, then I went back to streets in the seventh ward, I don't want to go through all that, but this board corrected those problems. And I think that's this board's responsibility, not to get involved with the state, not to get involved with Congress, that's their job. It's our job to do what's right here, and I haven't seen any problems in Haverford Township in the last eight or ten years compared to what we used to have here. I feel that's our job to do that, what Steve's saying.
Chris, I'm going to put that on one of my campaign pieces literature.
Just one more thing.
I'll concur with, with Mr. McGarrett in doing that. We, before I took office, it was horrible here, in fact, we still have some streets that, one side of the street is in another ward to get a district justice elected back in the day, but I agree, I mean, if the Constitution says, do your job, state representatives, we've gone, as Mr. Lewis has pointed out, our ethics have dictated that we took, took action to correct what needed to be corrected in our township, and to do that. But this, this, the wording of this resolution accuses them of doing a lot of different things. I don't necessarily totally agree with not dividing there, I can see the benefit of what happened when they did redistrict, this township has been, received the benefit of being divided between two House districts, the one sixty-third and the one sixty-sifth. We've, we as a township have enjoyed more grant revenue, better representation on the Appropriations Committee in Harrisburg, a million dollars for the library, one hundred and forty thousand dollars for the parking lot at Steelfield, another half a million dollars of backing in Harrisburg for our library renovations, so there are some good, I don't want to call it out, but they should do their job. If it says to do that, let them do it, and, but not be accusatory. So I, I think I don't agree a hundred percent with a lot of the wording that's in here, and for that reason, if you want to go back and reword it, I'm fine with that, but as it stands now, I'll vote no.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing.
He was redistricting right up to his flowerbed. I worked very hard to change that. But I have problems with this language. I have problems with this resolution. You talk about bipartisan. You just made it political, Mr. Siegel, by bringing Pat Meehan into it.
No.
You did. So, right there and then, you really just threw it into another direction, and that's my concern. Let's not bring any politics into it. Let's just talk about, and again, my concern is how many independents are going to be involved in this? And who's going to regulate this? Who's going to watch it when, if they can't make a decision, where does it go next? It goes to the Supreme Court. Supreme Court doesn't, can't reach, or they choose a master. Am I correct in saying that? And if they choose a master, who is that master?
Well, that's the beginning.
So, you're taking it out, then, in that regard, you're taking it out of this independent group's hands, and you're putting it into a master who's basically a college professor.
No.
Well, show me what you're saying, no.
Would you feel more comfortable with a definition of independent?
I can describe to you exactly how that works under the Constitution. Would you be comfortable with a definition of independent?
No.
So, if I were.
No, no, I don't, I want to make sure that, even if we put independents in here, I'm concerned about the language in here.
I'm just saying, if we defined it, if we defined it as, if we can just expand it and say it's a, we recommend that this be comprised of an odd number of independent voters registered at least 10 years as independents.
Oh, I would like that. I would like that, but that's not the only problem I have with this.
Pick randomly out of a hat.
Well, that's.
I mean, that's how you, if you want really independent, that's the way to do it.
No, you're right. You're right, absolutely. And I, that's, that's my point. That's another one of my points. But that's not the only thing I have a problem with, with this.
You get to 25 independents who say no thank you to that request to serve on this because they're independents in the first place because they hate the idea of politics.
They'd be volunteers.
I appreciate the concern. Before we go picking this apart, this resolution is a good resolution. This resolution was passed by Lower Marion unanimously. This resolution states the goals and then announces, you know, and then suggests that they try to meet these goals. Mr. Siegel wasn't doing anything political. Mr. Meehan, or whoever occupies the 7th District of Pennsylvania, now has a district that starts at the, starts at the edge of the Philadelphia International Airport, goes all the way out to Lancaster, and then curls around again and comes to Flower Town north of Philadelphia. That makes no sense. It literally looks like somebody spelled, spilled a fountain pen on a map of Pennsylvania and left a blotch there. It makes, it makes no sense, and his isn't the only one. It's all over the country like that.
This is the direction of the discussion.
It has nothing to do with the political party because both parties have done this. They're not competitive because one party has to dominate over the other. They're not competitive because each party has taken advantage of over 400 of these districts and made them not competitive. That has to stop. This is one way for us as a body who can't control the General Assembly, but at least we can speak as, as a body that does it ourselves and did it right after we did it wrong, after others did it wrong.
Listen, I agree, I agree on, you and I have a lot in common, some things, some things we don't.
Sure. We're both obsessed with The Godfather.
I'm sorry? We are.
Yeah.
Mo Green. Having said that, you know, look, I remember when I wanted to put the bond issue in a referendum, we spent almost $30 million. You said, "We were elected to make the tough decisions." So, why don't we bring this back to the redistricting committee, and let's talk about it further? I like, one of the things I liked, I mean, I have problems with this, but one of the things I did like was what Mr. Lewis suggested. So, that's something else we can, I mean, I don't know what the urgency is that we need to do this right now.
Or what?
The urgency.
I don't get the urgency, the wording what you like.
Can I just have one thing, though?
Leave from here.
We're talking about, we're talking about a resolution language, though, and the redistricting committee has a specific task, which is, it was to correct the problems that Mr. Lewis talked about, that, you know, Mr. Wexler and yourself had talked about, that where the Haverford itself was drawn in a way that did not make logical sense. And that's the role of the redistricting committee. No one's trying to change the role of the redistricting committee or how we draw the maps here in Haverford. All this resolution is saying is that we believe that the process as currently construed needs to be revised, and it needs to be revised by the state legislature. And that is the state legislature's responsibility to have things where they form their own subcommittees to determine how this should be done and to have public hearings as to how this should be done. That's not, that's not what we're doing. We're passing a resolution to go to the state legislature saying, "Please consider this when you make those decisions."
And this will be the first time in 12 years that I've ever seen us kick a table of resolution to send it back to one of our own committees. It's just a resolution.
Well, if they don't, I mean, if you don't like the wording, then you have the right to voice what wording you don't like. And Mr. Wexler's the same thing. If you don't like the wording.
We can also call.
It didn't originate within this body. It came from the outside. So, that's, so the language, the bulk of the language came from outside this body, not from our ordinance or any committee, any subcommittee that we have.
Well, it came from an organization that has at least 150 members from Haverford Township. So, while it came from outside of this table, this table represents everyone in Haverford Township. So, it came from citizens in Haverford Township who've seen this resolution passed in other towns and want it to pass in ours. So, let's be careful about distinguishing ourselves from the audience. They're, we represent them.
Mr. President, I'd ask that we call for a vote.
Mr. McCloskey?
I'd ask that we call for a vote.
Gentlemen, there's a call for the vote.
Second that.
Mr. Lewis? Take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
I'm staying.
McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
No.
Mr. Wexler?
No.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes, and the resolution passes. Item number 17, number 205517, professional fees conclusion.
16.
Consultation, excuse me. Item number 17.
President?
Or, I'm sorry, item number 16 for fee scheduling.
Yeah, I move we adopt Resolution Number 2054 of 2017, the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford authorized by laws to come with Pennsylvania to charge appropriate costs for certain public services.
Second.
Second by Mr. Oliva.
Attached to our agenda, folks, are, is the entire schedule and the few changes that are noted on that schedule are noted in highlighting and in, and in strike-throughs. So, if anyone would like to go over them specifically, I could give you an example. A new one is a fire incident report that's $25. We have changed the bulk collection now to just have per-unit fee of $18 or a clean-out of six to 10 items for a flat fee. Township synthetic turf rental fees have had slight increases at the request of our Parks and Rec Department, and we have added fees for activity rooms, studio, studio private, studio business, and the environmental lab.
Any further discussion?
And we have distinguished in the multi-use room, this is important, we have distinguished now between township residents and non-residents for the rental of the multi-use room at the crack. Resident fees have not changed, slight increase in non-resident fees.
This is 10 pages of fees. Do we do this every year, generally?
Yeah, we go through this every year. Yeah, we have to renew these every year, and then we, if there's any changes to be
made, they're done in this manner.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything further? There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes. Resolution passes. Item number 17 now for the professional fee schedule.
We adopt Resolution Number 20552017, authorizing the appropriate fees, costs, and charges, sorry, I just lost this.
For professional consultants.
Of the, and expenses for professional consultants.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis.
And these fees, these township engineers, senior professionals, project professionals, staff professionals, associate professionals, graduate professionals, technicians, these are our, these are our technical consultant fees. Our township solicitor remains at the fee previously agreed to, $175 an hour, and approximately $10 increases in township engineering fees. And I do believe these have not changed, I'm sorry, $10 for some with a couple $5 and $4 changes for these. These are at page 138 of your agenda, gentlemen.
I have it in front of me. Anything further?
Want to amend it?
Gentlemen, there being none.
No, the fee schedule, there's something, I was just looking at the fee schedule, and it shows polls to erect any telephone, telegraph, just in case you're putting up a telegraph poll, your fee, now you know that the fee is $35. So, if you're putting up a telegraph, it's $35.
Strike that word.
That word needs to be stricken.
Say, we got an electromagnetic pulse as a consequence of some dirty bomb going off somewhere. We're all going to wish we had telegraph lines up, okay?
Yeah, but they're not, we're not, we don't have them, so I just thought it was, you know, funny.
Okay, on item number 17, is there any further discussion?
No.
I think it's important to note, this is not an annual exercise we go through with the engineer. The engineer has provided us excellent service for scores of years here in the township, certainly the 12 that I've been involved. And the increase from $88 for a graduate professional to $92 per hour, I think, is entirely reasonable and probably over the years hasn't even caught up with the cost of living adjustments.
Mr. Secretary, take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis? Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes, resolution passes. Item number 18 is for the Greenways Trails and Recreation Program grant.
Mr. President, make a motion to adopt Resolution 20562017 that Haverford Township hereby requests a Greenways Trails and Recreation Program grant in the amount of $140,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for various improvements at the Steel Road facility, and that the Board of Commissioners does hereby designate Lawrence J. Gintili, Township Manager, as the official to execute all documents and agreements between the Township and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant.
Second.
Second by Mr. McGarrett. Any comments, discussion? There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes, resolution passes. Item number 19 is Resolution DUI Grant Application.
Sure.
Mr. D'Amelio? I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 20582017, authorizing a township manager to file yearly DUI grant application.
There's a typo there.
Yeah.
It's tie instead of two, right.
Second by?
Second.
Mr. McCloskey?
Do we have this resolution?
It's in there. Discussion? There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes, resolution passes. Number 20, let's see, we, prior to number 20.
Right.
That's where we're going to discuss the parking.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't want to keep it.
Do I be, what?
You did it already, didn't you?
No, you did yours, Jimmy. This is the discussion on.
Okay. This is, oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
This was the discussion on commercial parking vehicles.
Yeah, I won't keep, folks. This has gone long enough. We have, we've got a restriction on our books, commercial.
Vehicle parking.
Commercial vehicle parking, which is, looking up my, trying to look up in the code right now. Basically, we have, we have restriction on most of our township. I looked, and I literally lost count after 200 of the streets where we prohibit commercial, commercial vehicles. Now, the commercial vehicles as defined under this, under this ordinance in our township are not based upon size. They're just based upon any car that has any writing or any advertising on it. I want us to reconsider that. That would include, you know, that not only includes huge commercial trucks, but even a smart car right now that has a magnet on the side or has permanently stenciled advertisement or name of a business or a telephone number is technically violating our parking of commercial vehicles prohibited in numerous neighborhoods in our township. We are a township that, that, that has, as its residents, you know, numerous folks who run their own businesses, have small businesses, and it is, were these to be enforced, and they get enforced every time the police take a call from somebody saying, you know, "There's a car on my street and it violates the rules." You know, we're pushing these people into fewer and fewer places to park their cars. Now, we've had this discussion before about trucks and about truck sizes, and I think this is just one area where we've made, where we need to ask the police to look at this issue and come back to us with either a suggestion of other, how other townships do this or how the state does it. The state has commercial licensing where a commercial vehicle gets a commercial tag. That's not the same as, that's narrower than the definition we have in our, in our ordinances. And so, I don't want to, we don't have to go any farther than my just asking everybody to direct their attention to 17528 and 17529. I'll send it down, I'll send it to everybody and consider whether or not we want to, whether we want to redefine how we define the parking of commercial vehicles. Yes, Dan?
I read that, that a commercial vehicle is defined as a motor vehicle used in commercial business, et cetera, et cetera, with more than two axles or exceeding two tons in gross weight.
I know, because you're reading one of the definitions.
Or it, so.
No, there's a second definition of the, I.
You can read it both ways.
Well, let's go to, which one are you reading, Mr.? Which section are you reading?
B.
192?
7528B. I think it's subject to two interpretations.
Okay, because what we have in 179, 17592, I got to go back and find this.
Why don't you see what Lori has to say?
And it could be easily resolved, if your concern is, if I could just finish, it could be eas, I'm sorry. It could be easily resolved if it were changed to a commercial vehicle is defined as any motor vehicle with more than two axles or exceeding two tons in gross weight, used in a commercial business or enterprise on which appears advertising or identified of identification of a business or enterprise. I think that eliminates your concern.
Right, but the, which is fine, but it needs to be changed. B, a commercial vehicle is defined as any motor vehicle used in a commercial business or enterprise, any motor vehicle on which appears advertising or identification of a business or enterprise, or any motor vehicle with more than two axles or exceeding 4,000 pounds. I mean, so, commercial vehicle is defined as any motor vehicle with advertising or identification of a business or enterprise. And they are, if you then turn to, if you turn to 17592, I mean, there are literally hundreds of streets these are, these are prohibited on.
Set the record straight here, Lori. What's going on?
Under B, there's the definition that Commissioner Holmes just read, goes on to say the section or zone which is subject to this restricted commercial parking is, and it lists two areas, Rising Sun Road between Ardmore Avenue and Malvern Road and both sides of Bryn Mawr Avenue along Lorraine Street and Willow Avenue. Under A, the regulation is, it's a truck, trailer, semi-trailer, or other commercial vehicle that's list, would be subject to one seventy-five, ninety-two, and one seventy-five, ninety-two is the schedule. It's just a list of the applicable standards. But I don't know that there's any local definition of a commercial vehicle under A. So I believe, and the chief would have to correct me, they would use the motor vehicle regulation for a commercial vehicle under A. Thank you.
There it is, right there.
The issue is this gets enforced incorrectly.
Something that the ordinance committee looks at to clarify the definition.
Yeah, we're happy to, which is why I wanted to have this discussion and raise it to everybody's point. One seventy-five, twenty-eight, A, one seventy-five, twenty-eight, B, and one seventy-five, ninety-two need to be looked at.
What are you looking to do, Larry? I'm sorry. What, I mean, how about people who don't have commercial vehicles, but just have trucks?
Well, I, we've talked about trucks a lot, and I'm all for revamping our truck ordinance as well, because I think we're over-inclusive in our restrictions. I'm particularly concerned about commercial vehicles, because in the sixth ward, I have a lot of people who have what is defined as a commercial vehicle under our ordinance, and a lot of these people have restrictions in their own streets. They can't park their little regular four-door sedan because it has advertising on it.
No, I get that, but there are people who have trucks that can't park their trucks on the street.
Right, right.
And I think that just doesn't, I mean, I agree with what you're saying, but...
And this is a consequence, this is something, yeah, that I think we have to look at, because every, for the last couple years, every time we bring up another truck ordinance or restrictions in parking, we talk about this a little bit, but I think it's time now for the ordinance committee to take a look at these.
I totally agree with you on that, because a lot of people have...
I couldn't believe the pages and pages of streets in our town that have restricted commercial parking on them.
Well, can we have the ordinance committee take a look at it?
Yeah, I'd love that.
I mean, I want to look at...
All I wanted to bring, I wanted, solely for discussion purposes tonight, was to bring that up, yeah.
Is that all right? Larry, you agree with old trucks? Can we look at old trucks?
Yeah, I, the broader the better. I'm very particularly concerned about commercial vehicles, because it seems like half this township you can't park one.
Yeah, the only reason why I bring it up, because many residents not only have what you're describing, you know, they have their own businesses and things like that, but many residents have trucks today, a lot of people have trucks.
Yeah.
Well, what do you want to do, Steve, with people who on the street have no parking of commercial vehicles or trucks for twenty years, and it's been that way, and all of a sudden now you're going to change that? And what are you going to do there as far as the reading the ordinance? When you go around, you say the police don't know, but the police know. They look at the license, they see truck on there, and it says no parking of truck or commercial vehicle. Well, that's what their job is, to do that. So what do you want to do? Take those signs down and just have anybody park there then?
Why, there's a lot of letters between A and Z. I want us to look at these, because we have, I think, way too many restrictions.
Jimmy, I have the answer, what he's saying is right. There's a lot to look at.
I mean, and again, I didn't try to make this broader than just my concern tonight, but I'm literally looking at, I mean, over two hundred and fifty streets that have restrictions on commercial parking, commercial vehicles. And as it's defined, that has no relation to size. A Mini Cooper with writing on the side would be, is restricted by these. And I don't think that's what we ever intended, and I, this is just, it's just grown and grown and grown over the years as we make more and more restrictions.
In most instances, it's always the size that someone has to complain about.
Well, that's your biggest safety concern, is the width of a vehicle and the height of it and all that kind of stuff, you know? Obviously, a four, you know, a three-axle truck or a pickup truck with double wheels in the back, you know, that's fourteen thousand pounds, is very different from a Ford Fusion, you know, a thirty-two-hundred-pound sedan that has a magnet on the side.
But Chris, your truck in certain areas would not be allowed. I'm a commissioner, I can go anywhere.
Actually, his truck is under the eight thousand...
It's under eight thousand?
It's under the eight thousand restrictions, so you can park it.
It has an emergency license.
And the vehicle code doesn't actually...
I think should, like Dan said, let it go before the ordinance.
Yeah, please, and that's why I brought it up.
Again, I think you need to have it in a committee and...
Oh, I totally agree.
Because this issue is going to bring people out, and there's going to be a lot of different...
It will bring people out, and they have a right to hear it, but let it go to the ordinance committee.
Yeah, people need to, people need to know.
Yeah, we need to flush this out, this is going to be more than just one meeting.
I'm fine with that. So this discussion is going to be moved then to the ordinance committee?
Yes.
And are we looking at next month?
I did have a, as part of this issue, I did have a constituent raise...
That may be ambitious with the I four.
I'm not on that committee, am I?
And that's fine, well, then we'll just put it that it goes to the ordinance committee and we'll report back.
Either in August or September, but I don't see it happening by July, not with the schedules and the holidays and vacations.
As part of this, we might consider, you know, we may have, my, one of my constituents raised an issue about what they referred to as sign pollution, and just we may, as we evaluate all these, whether or not we're going to make systemic changes to our parking ordinances, we might just look at just how many signs we do have on all of our streets.
Chris, who's on the ordinance committee?
I'd have to look it up, Jimmy.
Hold on.
All right, the only other concern I have with the trucks, like, I mean, I don't know if Lori can tell us if we, if a truck has graffiti on it and things like that, don't they have to clean that up? You know? I'm talking about if it's unappealing, they have, you know, some bad language, you know, sometimes you go to a neighborhood, people have their own business, go in a neighborhood, unfortunately, they get spray painted with something very crude. Having that parked across the street from my house would bother me, especially if you have children. So I just want to clean that up, too. Like, you got to take care of it. If there's something on your car or truck that's crude in nature, then you need to, you need to take care of it.
And for clarification, the ordinance committee is Commissioner Wexler, Lewis, Commissioner McCloskey is vice chair, and I'm chair.
There you go.
And in terms of graffiti, calls for graffiti chapters.
Steve, graffiti is its own thing, whether it's on a truck or...
So they have to clean it up? Right?
It applies to walls. I mean, we had a problem with Lenar's Palm House.
I don't know if it applies to the cars or trucks, but I'm glad it does. But Dan's the chair of the committee, so Wexler's on it?
I think to do this right, it's going to take more than one or two months to...
They're just going to report back.
Right. As Commissioner Holmes pointed out, those two hundred and thirty-five streets, they're not every street, they're by block. I mean, we have ordinances that cover one block of Warrior Road and not the next, and then skips a block, and same in your ward.
We have ordinances that cover three or four houses, okay? This is a, this is a lifetime of, I'll take care of that on this block, I'll take care of it on this street, I'll take care of it in front of your house. And, you know, if one of our goals is to make us more user-friendly in this township and to make our government run better, you know, it's time for us to look at some of these things that have just grown into Frankenstein's and do something about them.
Gentlemen, that's going to move to the ordinance committee, and they will report back to us. Item number twenty on the agenda is contract awards and purchases, Darby Road Streetscape.
Wait a minute.
Mr. McGarrity?
Hold on.
We are holding.
I motion to award the Darby Road Streetscape contract the premier concrete in Brumall in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars, including various alternates and base bid of six hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second.
Taken by Mr. Oliva. Discussion?
How much of this is covered by grants?
Four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, Mr. Wexler. Remember, this is that multimodal transportation grant that we applied, and the good news is it also addresses flooding control.
Yeah.
Some of that flooding capital money, Mr. McGarrity, you discussed earlier, goes towards matching this grant. And, Mr. President, can I make another comment?
You can make a comment.
Obviously, this board appointed me in two thousand and seven as a township manager, and with my staff, we have completed several grants and a lot of improvements with Streetscape projects, which this is a portion of. I've never experienced the difficulty that we went through to get this approved through PennDOT, and I applaud Mr. Penoni and Mr. Faulkner, and I again, thank you. It's a miracle that we got this through. This, once this board approves this, we have a short timeframe. This will start two days after the school starts. You remember, a good portion of this is, the water retention area is going to be right there at Darby and Golf. So all this work has to take place and be completed, a good portion of it needs to be completed before the school year starts.
Mr. Wexler, what, can you educate us? What made this one so difficult?
You know, I probably wouldn't do us any justice. Dave, you want to stand up and just give us a very quick synopsis?
I don't want to say this very diplomatically.
Please do.
The seventh Streetscape project we did, the standard for review and approval that this one was held to, far exceeded the previous six. In terms of requirements from PennDOT for information outside of their right-of-way regarding grades and utilities and work we were doing outside of the right-of-way. And...
Sign-offs?
Sign-offs from property owners, including practically the term we got, the Y and Minno Road. So it was just, it was just accumulation of a lot of items that we just would not require to do in a pass. I do not know why PennDOT did that, so I'm not trying to throw PennDOT under the bus. I'm sure they had a good reason for it, but it was a heavy lift to get this done in time. If we had the luxury of time, we'd just get it done. But to get this done in time for school to start, that's, that was a heavy lift.
Is this indicative of how hard it's going to be for the next one?
I can tell you this, that it's indicative of how hard it's been multiple municipalities to us. Probably yes.
So it isn't us? We shouldn't take it personally?
No, no, absolutely not. No, it's not, not a haphazard thing.
Yeah.
And it was hard not to, by the way.
Forget Larry, of course you did, yeah.
But no, it wasn't a haphazard item. But it probably is. It probably is indicative of the path moving forward.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Penoni also conveyed to Chuck, thank you very much for all the work that you did in for that. If there's no, Mr. McGarrity? If there's no further discussion, please take the role.
D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarrity?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes, if this starts, another great big help to the Chatham-Glen-Homes neighborhood down there, because this is at the top of their watershed.
Right.
A continuation of item number twenty is Parks and Recreation.
Motion to authorize the purchase of playground equipment from George Eli Associates, Eli Associates Carlisle, Pennsylvania, and her co-stars fourteen dash oh eleven in the amount of thirty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Equipment is for Merwood Park.
Second.
Taken by Mr. McCloskey?
Okay.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry, I was talking to Taylor.
Any discussion?
Oh.
Obviously, you are.
Yes. Sorry.
There being none, please take the role.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes. Okay, next on the agenda, number twenty-one, is the continuation of Citizens Swarm for non-agenda items. I'm going to start on this side of the room, first row, second row, third row, on this side of the room, first row, second row, third row, last row. Name and address, please. At your leisure.
Ross Anderson, two twenty Heatherwood Road, Haver Town, PA. First, I want to throw in there regarding the districting. I think it's important that they focus on the number of competitive districts, because there's just, with how people like to clump up, like all the more liberal-minded or Democrats like going for cities, and with the Republicans being more like suburban or rural, it's kind of like a natural gerrymander. So you do kind of have, like, somewhat of a funky-looking map to have like, to maximize the number of competitive districts. And there have been studies that show, like, when you have competitive districts, you have representatives that are more responsive to the people. You also have to keep in mind, too, like, it doesn't matter, with the way we do our politics here, you just need to get to fifty-one, like, percent. I mean, sure, they could be going like, okay, we'll have this, this makes sense if we have this area represented, you know, we drew some nice lines, but that might be to the detriment of the party overall, and the other party ends up overruining the other one. You also have cases in, they have like a lot of sixty, forty states, like sixty percent Democrat, forty percent Republican, where they'll have like nine districts, but it'll be like eight to one in the House in terms of representation. That's my, those are just my thoughts on that. The one thing I did want to bring up tonight that I found alarming, and I got to thank H-CAN for making me aware of this, they put out some nice posters about this case, and at first I thought this person was a, for full disclosure, I thought this person was a Haverford resident, but it turns out they just had a Haverford mailing address, but they actually lived in Lower Marion. But I was, I was quite alarmed and disturbed to hear what happened to Jonathan Palacios. Jonathan is a Honduran immigrant who came here as an unaccompanied sixteen-year-old to escape an abusive father in extreme poverty. He came to PA to live with, to live with family. He missed the court date in two thousand and eight, and because of that, the judge issued a deportation order. However, ICE, Immigration and Customs Enforcement, did not do anything until last month. Jonathan, in the meantime, he got married in two thousand and fourteen. He went back to school and has a four-point O at the Delaware County Community College. He has been a model citizen, has not committed a crime. He works as a chef, but yet, last month, he was, well, headed out to work, he was pulled aside by ICE, they trapped him in his car, and they ended up holding him, and now he's in York County prison. I thought this was incredibly alarming. Now, technically, it is a Lower Marion issue, even though it is like Haverford. I just found out just this afternoon, there was actually like Haverford mailing address with Lower Marion issue, but I did find that particularly alarming, that a person like that who is harmless could get pulled away like that, and now they're trying to fly to get him in the States. But he's in prison right now. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Anybody else in the back row? Mr. O'Connor?
My name's Ronnie O'Connor, twenty-six oh eight Chestnut Avenue. I came here tonight to celebrate with a friend of mine, Wilbur Clevins, who I've served on the Parks Board with for, I guess, about two terms. And I came into a firestorm tonight, it was packed house, and it was an important issue. We all like the environment. We have a state representative that runs on being Mr. Environment, and he's not here tonight. We're not getting good representation from that representative, I think. I think this would be right in his wheelhouse. But if he was here tonight, and I got a chance to ask him, and I have asked him before, I'd ask him, with this climate change, global warming, I saw melting polar bears or something, I've asked him before, what temperature does the sun burn at? Does anybody know? Nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety degrees. Am I right? Six, well, six kelvins is the actual, just under six kelvins, so, but it's a rather high temperature. Does that sun maintain that constant temperature? Does it fluctuate? Fluctuate about eight hundred to a thousand degrees. Other question, I asked Mr. Vitale, and I've asked other experts, Peter Cosmeyer, some of us old timers would remember him, he was head of the EPA in this area. I said, how far is the earth from the sun? Anybody know?
Ninety-three million miles.
You got it, Larry, very good. All right, you get the story.
Just Googled it.
Right, well, that's...
Did I really?
He's typing it up. You anticipated that, Kavlar. Mr. O'Connor is the floor.
Is that temperature, or does that distance remain constant, or is there a variable there?
It's a little bit in and out.
Eh, six million miles, and these are all estimates. Nobody has ever taken a thermometer to the sun that I know of. I think NASA just sent an airplane, a spaceship out there to study it, but nobody's never put a thermometer to the sun. Nobody's taken a tape measure to the sun, and we're dealing with a variable of six million miles as far as distance, and yes, it, does that distance remain the same year after year, decade after decade, century after century? Come on, man, we, but yet, we're able to predict to the precise point oh two degrees increases, but we have all these variables. And I, you can laugh and say, oh, he's a climate denier, and Trump's a climate denier. No, we question. That's all, and maybe I put some questions in your heads tonight before we make big changes. And I'm all for, I'm on the Parks Board, and if you ever get to studying and really read how geothermal heating and cooling works, that's to the future, but let's, let nature take its course, so to speak, and people will find, you know, a more economical way of heating and cooling their homes, more viable, it'll come online. We don't have to make signs up and protest in the streets and whatnot. The township has for the last twenty years, I mean, they went on, I think Mario went on for about, I don't know, two, three, four minutes of the achievements we have done. for about, I don't know, two, three, four minutes of the achievements we have done. We're there, but we don't need this, I hate to see my fellow citizens all twirled up over something that, really, when you really research it, you know, there's a lot more questions, and it's not settled. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Anyone else?
I think if Ronnie O'Connor answers, I mean, gives Larry Holmes a couple more of those questions, and he answers, and maybe he will run for governor. How about that?
Yeah. Maybe. Well, to me.
All right. Anybody else? All right, thank you very much for your comments, gentlemen. Under new business, anybody have anything for new business? Moving forward, item number 23, other business, Mr. Demilio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really want to thank, what's her name? I'm sorry. Ms. Lute.
Mrs. Lute.
I want to thank you for organizing that. Seeing the young children out there, caring about the environment, that's educating them, I think it was a great thing. Listen, I said this to you outside, I believe there is global warming, and there is a problem, and we are losing a lot of the Arctic, and icebergs are continually just melting into the ocean. So we have to worry about maybe not our children, our grandchildren, but future generations, what's going to happen to the climate. And not only that, it's just not about rising sea levels and things like that, it's the environment and cancer-causing agents that are going on in the United States and throughout the world. Clearly, some of these issues that we're putting up in the atmosphere that come back down to the earth are cancer-causing agents as well, that we need to look at. So I fully support your group, I hope we do pass this climate change resolution, I'm sure we will, and again, I appreciate everything that you guys did today. The Westgate Hill Civic Association is going to have their 4th of July celebration up at Westgate Park. They had the concert there, and they also have had a movie night, so they do wonderful work up at the Westgate Park there. Two other issues occurred, I think, well, last time we met, and one of them recently is the Pulse nightclub that celebrate, well, I wouldn't say celebrating, it's a year since that tragic event where so many people lost their lives, and I think that we should think about those individuals that lost their lives in that horrific attack in the Pulse nightclub. Also, for the people of Britain, that was also a very tough day for them with that attack. It's getting to the point now, you can't even go out without, not worrying about a terrorist bomb, but a truck running over your family. So the United States needs to be diligent, along with our allies on terrorism, and do everything we can to stop terrorism, and a big part of that is, you know, even from our local levels, with our local police and everything that this government has said for many years, if you see something, say something. So whether you're on a train, or you're at an event, and even if you're at an event here, and you see a backpack that's unattended, report it to the police. It's better to be safe than sorry, let them check it out, they're the experts. So that's all I have for this evening.
Commissioner? Mr. McCloskey?
Sure, briefly, I'd just like to echo Commissioner Demilio. It is encouraging to see so many people be present for our meetings, you know, it's a form of healthy participation amongst our residents, and I think it's an important lesson to teach children about how our government works, how the process works, and how their voices can be heard. So anytime people want to come and talk in the public comment section, I think it's encouraging. Tonight, we talked about dogs and chickens and some environmental issues, and I think all of those are worthwhile. I certainly think that, you know, the climate change issue is probably the most pressing in terms of a global scale, and I would respectfully disagree with some of Mr. O'Connor's comments, but that's something we can debate next week, and I think all opinions are welcome. But I do think it's incumbent on this board to do something, and I think we'll, we will. Just to reiterate, an event I talked about that Parks and Rec is doing, they're doing a series of 5Ks, Sunset Trail Runs, that are the last Wednesday of every month, the first one was in May, the next one would be June 28th. I would recommend it as a fun event, there was a good crowd, and I think there'll be a bigger crowd in June, but you run through the trails that we talked about, that Mr. Denny talked about at the Crec, and it's an encouraging event, it's a fun event, and it's a really good course. I wasn't so proud of my time, but I do think I was first-place Commissioner Division again.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
I'll give you the title.
Yeah, I'm hoping to reclaim it in June.
He's a lot younger than all of us, too.
Yeah. And just to follow up on, again, on Commissioner Demilio's, we do agree on many things, even if we didn't agree on a couple of things tonight, but, you know, the Pulse nightclub, it was one of the, in my first year as a commissioner, remembering we had a meeting two days after that event happened, and it was something that still sticks with me today. But I was encouraged over the weekend, the library on Saturday had a teen pride event at the facility that was very well-attended, and it was a great event. And then there was the first annual pride picnic that took place at Merwood Park, which was a really encouraging event, and an expression of inclusion in our town, and a celebration of many of the families that live in our town. So, you know, I think there's a lot of encouraging things that are happening, to sort of, we can take sadness that happens and move beyond. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Siegel?
Thank you. Just following Commissioner McCloskey, I mean, I think the events over the weekend also just sort of show how our community stays and works together, regardless of different people and our differences. But the students who were here really reminded me of the issue of civic engagement, and made me remember the first Earth Day, and then I realized it was my teacher, Ms. Noff, who mentioned it to us, and we all got involved in elementary school, and that led to me reading Rachel Carson's Silent Spring, and growing from there into a variety of other areas that I am and have been involved in. But then, we had dogs and chickens, which brings back Commissioner Holmes's comments all the time, that, you know, most of what we do is local, and what we do impacts lots of people. When we talked about chickens a few years ago, there were very few people here, and it wasn't sort of controversial or a topic, but it shows how, with civic engagement of all people, it makes a difference. To the sort of more mundane, I just want to remind people about three upcoming events. One is Marilyn Park is having its block party this Friday, with 160 people registered so far, which shows that even in a small neighborhood, how many people are involved. It's Friday at 6:00, the rain date is Saturday at 6:00, although the weather forecast right now calls for rain both dates. So we'll see what happens. Paddock Farms is having their 4th of July celebration on the Saturday, the 1st of July, and that begins at 10:30, as it typically does, at Mary, on Mary Brook in the circle, and then has the parade, et cetera, and it will be run typically as it has for many years, I've been going there, you know, since my kids were very little. And finally, in terms of events, Linwood Park is having their 4th of July parade on the 4th of July, beginning at 9:15, starting at Mount Pleasant Road and Howe Lane. So anyone in that neighborhood is encouraged to attend. I also just want to thank the Historical Society and all the people who attended the Heritage Festival. It was a massive crowd, it was as large a crowd as I've seen, and they did a wonderful job, and the Historical Society, I think, is sort of a hidden gem of this township, and I put it in my recent newsletter, that if you're interested at all in the township and its heritage, I really encourage you to volunteer or to get more information about the Historical Society. They do a lot with a limited number of volunteers, and the Heritage Festival demonstrates just what a remarkable amount of work they do with such a small group. And that's all I have, and have a happy July 4th, everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just two quick things. In terms of the College Avenue Bridge reconstruction update, there continues to be, we thought the issues involving the utility easements and SEPTA issues were resolved, and apparently they're still ongoing, unfortunately. So that project, if you drive by there, you'll see very little activity. There's been a little bit done, but not much, and it's supposed to be done by the end of December, so PennDOT's still saying December completion, but if you look at the state of the bridge today, you wouldn't, you'd never think that that's possible. So I would guess there's going to be some delay there, so, but I'll keep you posted as I learn more, but, but the good news is, they will, that will obviously cause a delay in the reconstruction or the start of the Ardmore Avenue bridges, so obviously they're not going to have both bridges or both streets closed simultaneously. So I'll keep everybody posted on that issue. I also want to thank a number of 5th Ward residents who were here tonight, who spoke out on the climate change and environment, and their concerns and suggestions, appreciate that very much. Also, another 5th Ward resident who came out and spoke about the dog policy and the need for consistency, and another fresh look at that whole policy and how we implement that. So I'm looking forward to hearing back from the Park and Rec Board about their recommendations as it relates to dogs in our parks, because I think it does need to be updated. So that's all I have, Mr. President.
Holmes?
Thank you, Mr. President. In the 6th Ward, we've been meeting a couple times about the temporary relocation of the YMCA's summer camps to the Chestnut Wald School. It is, it is a one-time change because of the work that is happening at the middle school this year that prevents, really prevents the safe holding of the camps. There's work out front, it makes drop-off difficult, there's work in the gym, and there's going to work in the back of the school. So, school district and YMCA and the township got together. The conclusion was that the, rather than the best alternative, I'll say, the least offensive alternative was the Chestnut Wald School. It has, it's the modern school along with Minoa, it has air conditioning for the indoor programs, but it has caused a great deal of consternation within the 6th Ward about the increased traffic. The YMCA and the school district and the township have all met together and met with residents. The YMCA will be, will be using buses to transport hopefully most of the children in the morning to the Chestnut Wald area from the Linwood School. The afternoon pickup is spread out over much more time, 4:00 till 6:00, so we don't expect traffic to be a problem. The police will be increasing their presence in that community at the start of the camp to watch out for folks that are, any traffic issues, any safety issues, or if people aren't following what we hope are going to be easily followed rules about dropping kids off in the back and not dropping anybody off on the sides of the school. Township and the Police Department and the school district and the YMCA have been available at two public meetings that we held in the 6th Ward. But I encourage anybody in that neighborhood or in the 6th Ward, camp will be starting on Monday, the 26th. If you are, if you have concerns, or if you see during the camp any concerns, safety issues with the kids, or parents dropping their children off in any of the unauthorized areas instead of in the back, I encourage you to call the police and let them know the police are attuned to this. The YMCA is very vested in this program working and causing the least amount of disruption to the residents of the Chestnut Wald area. So I encourage anybody who has any issues to call me or to call the police directly. It does not have to be an emergency, the police encourage you to call 911 if your car is blocked in at your driveway, or you have any other issues that are a consequence of this temporary relocation of the camp. Camp has about 300 kids, and approximately 80 to 85% of the kids are Haverford Township residents, so it is certainly something the entire township takes advantage of. But for the folks in the Chestnut Wald area, it will be an imposition this summer that they not had to live with previously, and we hope that it goes as well as planned. With, I would not want anyone to think that my calling out 93 million miles in any way suggested that I agreed with the conclusions of the speaker about climate change. I'd say a little fact about eclipses. The moon is 360 times closer to the earth than the sun is. It also happens, through some incredible celestial coincidence, to be 360 times smaller than the sun, and that is why we get the spectacular solar eclipses that we get. We don't just get the sun blocked out, we get Bailey's beads, we get the corona, we get this extraordinary sight that only happens because of the coincidence of those two spaces. The sun has been 93 million miles away from the earth for a very long time, and the moon's been 235,000 miles from the earth for a very long time. And we know the temperature of the sun, and we know the temperature of the earth, and we know the rising sea levels, and we know that after an unprecedented 100 years of economic and industrial growth, we have global warming, and it will destroy the earth unless we do something about it. So what we can do at the local level, we will do, and I promise, we have done and will do, and if we can do anything at the state and federal level, I promise we'll do that, too. One last thing, a proud father just wants to reach out to one of his young constituents, Kevin Holmes will be starting the Merchant Marine Academy in two weeks, and I'm going to miss him terribly. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. McGarrett?
Okay, I only have two things. Number one, Mr. Connell's going to pinch-hit for me on Thursday night, a new gift shop in Brookline is opening up, and Mr. Connell will be doing the ribbon-cutting down in Brookline at 6:00. Also, another one that Mr. Connell will be talking about is Independence Day for the residents is the 7th Ward, July 4th, down at the Grange Field. Of course, we'll have all those festivities we usually have, along with the Brookline Fire Company, and please, they will be selling chances, Brookline Fire Company, they did last year, it was very successful, we're urging you to come out and support the fire company, because that money goes to help them in their causes with the fire department. Remember, they're all volunteers, just like selling the chances, they're there all day, giving the kids rides and all, and it's all volunteer. So I'll let Chris get along with all the details of Grange Field on the 4th of July. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I just got a couple of things. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Gentile in the Public Works Department. The parking lot at Steel Field has been completed for the last month or so. I have received many calls thanking us for increasing the parking there, it's increased the safety of the children. For those that have not driven by it, it was done almost completely with our own Public Works Department. Kudos to the Doc and Steve Sinibalde for supervising, and then the people that are on the crew that actually did the landscaping, the planning with care, the weeding, and then constantly maintaining the parking lot. It's settling in, we're putting more crushstone in there as we go, but the compliments and the safety of the children has been paramount. So again, thank you to Mr. Gentile and Mr. Dockerty and the entire Public Works staff for working on that, and the Recreation Department, it was Tim's recommendation to put the fencing down the fieldside, it looks phenomenal with the landscaping. Second thing is for the residents in the area, Vermont Road has been undergoing multiple aqua projects over the last couple of months, in both Glendale and Vermont. Vermont's been closed. I'd like to thank our Police Department for the enforcement that they're doing on speed and enforcement along Warrior Treaty and the other roads adjacent there, as people cut through, especially now with the children out of school and out there playing, and more back-and-forth traffic to the ballfields. It's just a tribute to the Police Department, their enforcement there as well. Hopefully, the project will be over in the next three weeks, and we'll be back to normal before school starts again. And then finally, the Hilltop Civic Association is having their July 4th celebration at 9:30 on that day. This will be the second year that the Denny family's not running the program. It's a great program, we, you know, the bicycles are there, we walk from the Bonner Fire Company down to Hilltop Field, have games, and we're supported by both the Bonner Fire Company and the Minowa Fire Company that day with the parade, so, thank you to both the fire companies, and that's all I have, Mr. Connell.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Oliva?
Okay, let's start off with, the Minowa Civic Association is having, the newly-formed Minowa Civic Association is having their 4th of July parade on, begins at 9:45 at the Sacred Heart Parking Lot on Shellborne and Minowa Roads there. We will begin with that. The, I had the opportunity to work as a docent over at the Heritage Festival over the weekend, and you really need to get out to Nyer Hall and look at some of the stuff that's going on over there. It very, it was eye-opening for me, Irene Coffey gave me some, gave me a cheat sheet to look over, and we were, I was just like... to look over, and we were, I was just like going through that sheet and learning new stuff all the time, so you really should get out there, and there's a lot of history here in Haverford Township. And I want to also thank, I know Chris and Jimmy were there, Mr. Cleary's third-grade class at Chatham Park, who sent us some letters, and we came in and answered their questions. A very, very nice group of kids, asked a lot of very interesting questions, and we, it was a lot of fun for us, as well as I think the kids enjoyed themselves, too. And there were a lot of environmental questions, which was very important.
And we were also thankful of Mr. Dockerty from Public Works, and Lieutenant Glenn came along.
Okay, so, they were all there, too. I came on a separate day because I worked night work, so I couldn't be there on Friday, but so I came on Monday and met and answered children's questions. Also wanted to talk about coming up, coming up this month is Moonlight Dining Under the Stars over in, over in Brookline, July 11th, from five till eleven at night, there'll be, you can go out to the HPD's Facebook page or to the HPD website, and there's information on making reservations. It's really going to be a fun night, looking forward to it. Again, it's July 11th on Brookline Boulevard. And Flag Day is Wednesday, wanted to mention that because it is also the fifth-year anniversary of the opening of the crack. So it's five years since we've opened that, and of course, we've got the most beautiful flag, you know, very nice-looking flag. So, also, the Manoa Road is closed during the day in one direction, right by the Wawa, where the Wawa is up by the police station. They have one lane blocked off during the day, so if you're going in that, just be aware that you're not going to be able to go towards Eagle Road. So, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Secretary, do you have anything you'd like to say?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. Anybody of the staff?
So, and I am always the last person. The Eighth Ward, July 4th, Tuesday, absolutely, there's going to be a big shindig at the Grange Field. It is run by the Penfield Civic Association, so just go on Facebook to Penfield Civic Association, you can get all the details there. Nine o'clock, little parade starts up, there's rides, there's the fire companies there, Brookline Fire Company, again, with their raffle, it's, believe me, the fire truck rides are absolutely the joy of the day, so they like to get out of there, but unfortunately, they keep saying, sure, one more person, one more person. Penfield Civic Association, Facebook them. Also, there is Lanark Playground, is Lanark Fire Company going to be there for?
Yes, they will.
Lanark Civic Association?
Lanark Civic Association. I don't have times on that, when that starts, so I will, we'll post that on their, I guess, their Facebook when we have more information.
Okay. Talking about bridges being out, the East Manoa Road Bridge will be, they're taking, PennDOT is rebuilding the East Manoa Road Bridge down by Caricon Drive, that's just starting this spring of next year?
Yes, sir.
And also, we'll keep you up to date on that, it will be closed for a long time. So, there won't be any other way around it, we'll send everybody up to, what, College Avenue?[1666.11][1666.11](laughter) If the bridge is done. Yep, June 16th, well, it's the last day of school. Everybody, please, please remember that, you know what, all of a sudden, our streets become the playgrounds of all the kids out there. So please, drive with extra care, watch out. And my thanks to the Public Works Department and all the work that they put in here. When you leave tonight, please take an opportunity, when you leave this building, to look at the memorial stones that we have here behind the Eric Catrani Building. They do belong at the Veterans Memorial Field, they will go back to Veterans Memorial Field when the campus down there has been renovated, but right now, they have done an exquisite job of moving those stones and making that a memorial that we can all be very, very proud of for all our soldiers that have dedicated themselves and our first responders. Please take the time to take a look at it. Splendid job, absolutely, and I guess you were out there planting some flowers, too, weren't you? That's what I heard. It's beautiful, thank you very much for that. Yes.
I just want to mention, on your way out, after you look at that, the fountain that's out here, the Lidded Fountain, which is on the triangle, take a look at it, really, really nice, just put in by the HPD. You know, the township, Public Works helped on that project, and of course, and then the planters along Darby Road, so take a look at that on your way home.
Yep, everybody, just please be safe, have a very enjoyable summer. We will see you back here in July. The Commissioners meeting, work session, we have a work session in July?
We do not have a work session.
No work session in July, okay. Thank you very much for coming out tonight, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Let's adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.